Ladies and gentlemen, I am calling this meeting of the City Council, special meeting of the City Council to order. Please note that pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 orders to suspend insurant provisions to the open meeting law and the governor's March 15 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, as well as Mayor Carter Tony's declaration of emergency dated March 15, 2020, this meeting of the City Council will be conducted via remote participation. We will post an audio recording, audio/video recording, transcript or other comprehensive record of these proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the City of Somerville website and local cable access government channels. This special meeting of the City Council has been called by myself, the President, for consideration of any and all business that may come before the council. Mr. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
I believe, Mr. President, we should begin this meeting with a prayer.
It's been a few, it's been a couple of weeks. Let's begin with a prayer and pledge allegiance.
Mr. President, let's begin this meeting with a prayer. God grant this City Council the serenity to accept the things that cannot be changed, the courage to change the things that can be changed, and the wisdom to know the difference. And now let's join in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Now, can you please call the roll?
This is roll call. Counselor Klingon.
Present.
Counselor Mbah.
Present.
Counselor White.
Here.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Present.
Counselor Strezzo.
Present.
Counselor Niedergang.
Here.
Counselor Davis.
Here.
Counselor Scott.
Here.
Counselor Ewan Campan.
Here.
Counselor Rosetti.
Present.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Here.
Mr. President, all living councilors are present. We have a quorum.
Do we have any moments of silence? Here are no moments of silence, going once, going twice. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, item number three, it's a public hearing on the communications submitted by 19 residents who requested a public hearing on Tufts University's plans to reopen its campus in the fall.
Okay, as the clerk mentioned, this is a public hearing due to a citizen's petition, requesting to be heard about the Tufts University plan to reopen. Before I open this public meeting, I want everyone to know that you will have the opportunity to speak if you're registered online and are currently observing this meeting. I will call you in the order in which you are registered for this meeting. All you have to do is click on the raise hand icon when it comes time to speak, and I will unmute you. I'll take testimony in order that the people enter this meeting, and if you entered this meeting just to attend and don't wish to speak, please just indicate that. If you are unable to click on the icon, or if you have joined the meeting by telephone only, then you can contact your city councilor after this meeting, or you could submit your comments by US mail or by email to the city clerk at citycouncil@somervillema.gov. I will keep the public record open for each of these public hearings until the close of business on Friday, August 21. So I now declare this public hearing open. We are holding this here, I mentioned that already, this is an opportunity for residents to speak their mind. However, it should be noted that representatives from Tufts University will not be present at this meeting to respond. The City Council is here to listen and may choose to speak after the hearing, but we will not be responded directly to individual comments. At the end of this hearing, I intend to refer the item to the Public Health and Safety Committee so we can have more in-depth questions about the planned reopening. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak, and currently we have over 50 people in attendance, so please try to stay to those two minutes out of respect for other people's time, and please try not to repeat any comments that have already been presently, that have already been made. I'm gonna now go over to the attendance sheet, if I can find it. All right, so just to give people a heads up, I have Joshua DePonte as first, then Matthew Noonan, and Daisy Monsalve, Alex Peary, so we'll go in that order. Mr. DePonte, you now have the floor. Oh, Mr. DePonte has disappeared. So Daisy Monsalve. Are you there, Ms. Monsalve?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, ma'am.
Good evening. Okay. Yeah. Okay, good afternoon. I decided to, I decided to ask questions because I live very near Tufts University, and my concern is not the people that were living there in campus as much as people that are coming from another area that will come to be around here. They are kind of children, and they will get together, as they always said, and you can see it on different emails that they have shown and different photos that they have shown on TV. And I am 78 years old, and I have a daughter that is not, not so well on sickness, and that is one of the problems that I have, opening universities, schools, and everything related to not only the rules that are being written on, but the rules that are not being followed by none of them. And that is one of my concerns, what are we doing about that, especially outside campus? Inside campus is gonna be a problem, and they can solve it, but outside campus, like they run around and they go all the, all these, all these streets around Somerville. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your time, ma'am. And just so you know, this list is changing, so next up is Joe Beckman, followed by Colleen Flattery, and Alan Inalcio. So Mr. Beckman, you now have the floor. Joe, are you there? And now Joe has disappeared. Next up on the list, Joe, are you there? All right, next on the list I have Debbie Muniscal. Debbie, are you there? I don't see a speaking icon for Debbie. Mr. Clerk, this is all working correctly, right?
Mr. President, are you looking at the attendees' names by arrival time?
I am.
Okay, you should be.
There's Debbie. Debbie, are you there?
I don't need to speak.
Okay, Debbie, you have the floor.
Thanks. I don't need to speak. Just wanted to watch.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is James Defavre. James, are you there? James Defavre. Going once, going twice. All right, next up I have Joe Lynch. I'm sure you'll be there to speak, Joe. Are you there, Joe?
Mr. President?
Yes.
You should be looking for people who have used the raise hands icon. Those are the folks who have indicated that they want to speak.
Okay, well, currently, no one has raised their hand. And the list keeps shifting on me. Joyce Short, I know Joyce Short might have something to say. Joyce, are you there?
Mr. President, Marcy Nash has had her hand raised for a period of time.
Okay, let me find her. Marcy Nash, you have the floor. Are you there? Marcy Nash, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I did attend the community meeting yesterday with the Tufts personnel, and my concern is that for the off-campus students, students who are living off-campus, that it's gonna be very hard to ensure that those students are masked, are not hanging out in large groups and talking. I'm sorry, in large groups without masks. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Mary Ann, Mary Ann, Mr. President, Mary Ann Walls has her hand raised.
Mary Ann, you have the floor.
Ms. Walls needs to unmute herself.
Mary Ann, can you unmute yourself?
I just did, thank you.
There we go.
Well, first, thank you guys for having this meeting. So my concern is, the mayor points out that Tufts is a good community partner, then why did we need to find out about their reopening through the news and not through Tufts University itself? The other thing, regarding the community meeting last night, they said that the city was aware of the plans of the rollout, and, which differs again from what the mayor said. My concern is, being a frontline worker and having to go out and expose myself to the virus also meant that I had to take into account exposing my family and my community, which Tufts has not really given a lot of thought to, nor have they really given a clear plan on bringing back the custodians, which were all laid off. How is the buildings gonna be maintained and cleaned? They're testing a rapid test which has no clear reporting. Sometimes they're positive and they're false, sometimes they're negative, they're false, and they haven't really come up with a plan on how to enforce our community. So as rates rise and they continue not to address this or work with the workers on safety precautions, it becomes a huge concern for our community. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Next up, we have Ann Kamara, and if anybody else wishes to speak, please use the hand icon, and we can call on you. Ann, you have the floor.
Hi, nice to be here. So I live all the way on the other side of Somerville, and I'm already seeing college-age kids with absolutely no mask on, not even around their neck. I really believe, I don't know if it's still in the $300 ticket, I really think you should start ticketing people, and the word will get around that that means something, that it is being implemented. I wasn't able to make the meeting last night, but I was wondering if these kids are being tested before they come into the college. I don't know why they did, did anybody off-campus, if they were going to have kids to the college, they should have just done on-campus. It's very frightening out here. We worked really hard here in Somerville to get these numbers, keep these numbers down, and I spoke to two kids out on my street, and they told me that they were not from this area, they were from down south, and like I said, not even a mask around their neck. So, okay, that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you very much. Next up, we have Tori Antonito. Tori, you have the floor.
Yes, yes, I want to unmute myself. Oh, hi.
Yep, we can hear you.
Could you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so, yeah, thanks for having this meeting. I was at the community meeting last night, and my concern, my questions are more about the workers, and I just gotta say, it was really disappointing, because I'm gonna read you my question, and just because they didn't answer it there. So it starts with, what protections is Tufts providing its custodians, kitchen workers, landscapers, other laborers, et cetera? And that was sort of the beginning question, and they answered that with, you know, we're providing PPE, cleaning supplies, hand sanitizer. But my greater question, which isn't, wasn't answered, and was actually about the safety of the workers, and I'll just read it, you know, how often will the workers be tested? Because I talked a lot about how often the kids would be tested, you know, what is the hazard pay? Will Tufts provide health insurance to all of its uninsured employees? Will infected workers have the option to quarantine at Tufts? Because the kids can quarantine, you know, and could that be an option so the workers then don't bring it home to their families? So I guess my questions were around, you know, I just really wanna know how they're going to be taking care of their workers, and it didn't seem to be touched on, unless they touched on it after I left. So it was really frustrating that they kinda, I think it was moderated by a Tufts, by Tufts University, so they didn't actually have to answer the questions that they didn't want to answer. And so that, and the other thing is, just like, as the other caller said, you know, what do we do when the kids gather in Davis Square, and they're unmasked, and they're talking, and they're, you know, not social distancing, like, what do we do? And my other question is just about, how many, how many Somerville police are, what are the coordination efforts going to look like between Tufts Campus Police and the Somerville Police? So that's about it. Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have Monica Holland. Monica, are you there? Your microphone is on. Monica Holland, would you like to speak? Going once, going twice? Whoever is laughing, please mute your microphone.
Oh.
I'm gonna move on to Connor Black, then. Connor Black, are you there?
Yes, Connor Blank, thank you. I'm a current Ward 5 resident and also a Tufts alum, and I have serious concerns about the Tufts reopening. I think as a community, Somerville has done a really good job mitigating the impacts of COVID, and this decision to reopen for in-person learning is standing to risk pretty much everything we've worked for over the last several months. Somerville Public Schools has decided to do remote learning for the coming semester, and it makes me wonder, what does Tufts administration think that they know about COVID that our own Somerville Public School administrators do not know? I hold nothing against the Tufts students, I was a former student, but there are certain to be some among that student body who will not take this seriously. All it takes is a few mistakes for an effect, an infection at Tufts to spiral out of control and affect the residents of Somerville. I think this is an incredibly arrogant and greedy decision by the Tufts administration. I wish that they had decided otherwise. I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Miles Donovan. Miles, are you there? Miles Donovan.
Can you hear me? Hello, hi. I am a current Tufts employee, and I wanted to voice my concerns because Tufts employees have received some survey data from returning Tufts students in regards to the likelihood that they will be compliant with the rules that the administration has laid out, and there are a substantial number of students who responded that they would be somewhat compliant. And just in practice, I, as a university employee, have felt like the university has not communicated effectively with its staff, in addition to the cities of Somerville and Medford. And I think that it's worth noting that a previous question-asker was curious to know about hazard pay for Tufts employees who are being forced to work on campus. HR has decided that that will not happen, and I think that that is a valid concern for community members. And I also think that it's worth saying on the record that there is substantial concern amongst Tufts staff about this push to reopen, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have Ian Adelman. Ian, you have the floor.
Hi, everybody, thank you, City Council, for hosting this. It's a really important topic to all of us. And yeah, I think starting with concern for the workers on campus, hearing from Miles, but also from other folks we've been hearing from, there's real concern about Tufts plans. It's a far more open campus plan than we see at a lot of other schools. And attending that meeting last night, you know, hearing from President Monaco about some of his assumptions, I was like, I was really alarmed. He said that Massachusetts increase in cases is solely attributed to more testing. He was not concerned by the increase. He thought that that just had to do with the fact that Massachusetts was testing more people. And he also characterized nationwide that the pandemic is past its peak nationwide and is getting better. And so those are the people at Tufts that are making those decisions about reopening. It just seems so off with everything else that we're all reading. So I really hope that our city's leadership can actually have a say in how Tufts reopens. I mean, I don't know, I think the library is in Medford, but I mean, there's buildings that are in Somerville that are gonna have more people in them than Somerville's saying is okay to have people inside gathering. So I would expect that Tufts plans should have to pass our city's public board of help, our city's idea of what's safe, and they shouldn't be left to decide on their own. If they, if they are a neighbor in our community, then they should be held to the same standard and expectations of all of us. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, and thank you, everyone, for respecting the two-minute limit as well. I see a number of people have signed in afterwards, so if anybody else out there would like to speak, please just use the hand icon, and I will get to you in order. The next up is Anna Leslie. Anna, are you there?
Yes, hello, my name's Anna Leslie, and thank you for this. I submitted a letter on behalf of several residents, so several questions contained in there, I won't repeat those, but I find it highly concerning and alarming that Tufts is not even present tonight. A community meeting last night was conducted by Tufts, lasted arbitrarily for an hour and a half, although there were dozens of questions left unanswered. I have asked those questions of Tufts now twice, those have continued to go unanswered. Tufts is a part of a social ecosystem, and their actions are impacting the health, the livelihoods, the outcomes of all of us, of their staff, of the families of their staff. And their plans and the approach to those plans are not adequately emotionally or financially invested in this ecosystem's survival or recovery. Tufts has a $2 billion endowment, and a Tufts contributed just 25% of what they would owe the City of Somerville if they paid property taxes. That would be 0.08% of their total endowment. So I'm frankly insulted that Tufts is not here. They are not financially contributing to the recovery of our city in any kind of significant way. They're not responsive to the questions and concerns of residents, which go far beyond our own personal concerns, but I want to echo Connor and Ian and others before, concerns for professors, for teachers, for janitors, for the children of all of those people who are having to navigate how to send their own kids back into a system. I think the meeting last night was insulting, and I really, really encourage, and I really hope that city leadership digs with whatever power you have to compel Tufts to the table. Lastly, I just wanna say, Somerville is still in phase two, and Tufts has declared that they are in phase three. I don't understand how that works. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Melissa Spatz. Melissa, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you so much. So I live on Bromfield Road, I'm just a block away from Tufts, and we have neighbors on our block who are senior citizens. One of my neighbors is 94 years old, we have neighbors who have compromised immune systems. I registered because I'm really worried for them. I agree that last night's meeting was insulting and that it was arrogant. Count me among the people whose questions went unanswered. I had questions around Tufts willingness to shift plans as conditions continue to change. We know the numbers are going up. That got completely ignored. It struck me that Tufts said that they developed relative risk categories for students and faculty and staff, although I'm hearing that's not really accurate, but it doesn't sound like any risk categories were developed for the community, and that's really concerning. As others have said, the numbers are increasing. Certainly 5,500 students coming back into the neighborhood is gonna increase the risk in ways I don't think we can tolerate. Some students are already back, there is already a lack of masks, there's already congregating in the street, there are already parties. And while education on the importance of masks and all of that is wonderful, it hasn't resonated so far if it's been underway. And so I'm really concerned. I know Tufts is obviously not here, and I guess I'm left with a question about what Somerville can do about this matter. Somerville has handled everything so well until now, is there nothing that can be done around this? And to what extent can Somerville be part of the monitoring of what's happening on campus? So thank you.
I'm sorry, I have myself muted. Lindsay Patterson, you have the floor.
Hi, thank you, City Councilors, and thank you also to the Somerville residents who called for a public hearing. I want to voice my support for the four issues raised in the letter by 19 Somerville residents. As already raised tonight, I'm also wondering how Tufts plans to financially compensate the Somerville and also the Medford communities for the negative externalities that their on-campus model is going to generate. And by these externalities, I'm thinking increased community cases, increased community transmission that disproportionately affect our minority community. I'm wondering, basically, if Somerville is going to ask for compensation, or if Tufts has any plans to provide financial compensation for these costs. Tufts will capture basically all the financial benefits of this on-campus model, but they will not incur all of the costs. And I think that compensation, either in the form of a percentage of room and board or on-campus fees to the surrounding communities, is the bare minimum that Tufts could do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Alex Peary. Alex, are you there? Going once, going twice? Next up, we have Colleen Flattery. Colleen, are you there? Colleen Flattery.
Yes, are you able to hear me?
Yes, please continue.
Great, thank you, thank you. Thank you for hosting the call. I also attended the meeting last night over the internet, but I joined on late, so, you know, I do feel like other people had mentioned that there was a lot of questions unanswered or spoken around. What I did hear is that the on-campus students will be tested, or even off-campus students will be tested, twice a week. And my concern is that that's gonna give them a false sense of security, that if they're tested twice a week, they're gonna be walking around that they're not the problem. Also, too, when the pandemic hit, and it was March, when people, when we had closed Somerville schools already on March 11th or 12th it was, and Tufts was exiting, the students on College Ave were playing beer pong, about 30 people were playing beer pong. So my concern right now is about the off-campus students. With the on-campus students, my understanding is that they are not allowing visitors into the dorms. So if one had lived in Lewis Hall and another person lived in Carmichael Hall, they can't visit the other halls, which is great, but my concern is more of, what is the percentage of people that are attending Tufts University that are living off-campus, that are living in apartments, that this rule does not apply to? Because I do feel that... Because I do feel that if they are having these rules where the students can't visit each other in the dorms, they're going to filter out into the apartments. They did say that we could call the Tufts University Police, and the Tufts Police would handle the matter. They also said that there would be consequences. Basically, if a student forgot a mask, it would be a lower consequence if somebody broke a bigger problem. But they never said what the problem would be. So my concern again is really with off-campus. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Jim Bossi. Jim, are you there? Jim Bossi, you have the floor.
I hate talking.
Jim, are you there? Has the microphone's on?
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you, Jim.
Okay, I watched the meeting last night. And, you know, President Monaco a few times said he felt that the plan would keep the community safe. And personally, I'm not feeling very safe about this whole thing. It seems like he read from a PowerPoint and that was it. He said that Tufts has contracted and hired the Broad Institute to do their testing. An article in the Boston Globe said that the Broad Institute currently performs 7,000 tests a week. That was their maximum. And with all the students returning to Boston, the Broad Institute will direct 100,000 tests. They hacked at the Broad Institute and asked them if they were capable of this and can they handle it. They never. This doesn't give me a real warm and fuzzy feeling, okay? It's very unnerving to listen to what was presented last night. I think there's a lot of things that are still left dangling. I think the community's welfare and health are in the lurch. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have Suzanne Althoff. Suzanne, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Thank you so much for having this meeting and for letting me talk. I also attended the meeting last night with Tufts, and I was extremely disappointed. I agree with the previous participant who just said that they were reading off of PowerPoint slides. I am very concerned about the Broad Institute testing. As the previous caller mentioned, the Broad Institute currently does not test the number of, process the number of tests as they are promising they will do come September. When President Monaco was pressed on this issue, he said, "We can talk to the Broad if there are delays." This sounds so wishy-washy to me. If tests are not returned within 24 hours, I think that Tufts' testing protocol falls completely apart. I am also very concerned about off-campus students. There was an article in the New York Times over the weekend in which they interviewed students across the country, and the consensus was that students will be choosing off-campus housing if they want to avoid their campuses' harsh and strict COVID rules. So it's, I feel like the students who will be drawn to off-campus housings are the one who want to break the rules. This is, as others have said, we've worked so hard in Somerville to get our numbers where they are. I have an elementary school-aged child. I'm not sending him to school, as is every other parent. We've made great sacrifices. I really see no sacrifices that Tufts is making to protect neighbors, to protect frontline workers, to protect janitors. I don't understand how we can monitor and dictate to dry cleaners and to gyms and to movie theaters what they can and can't do. But we seem to have a handoff approach with Tufts in this city. And I would love for the council to investigate what they could do. Thank you so much for giving me a chance to speak.
All right, thank you. The last person who has their hand raised is Christine Durden. After she speaks, I'll give anyone else a chance to raise their hand. Again, there's a hand icon you can press, and I will call on you. But if no one else wishes to speak, Christine, you are the last speaker.
Hi, are you able to hear me?
We can hear you.
Ah, excellent. Yeah, so I am also a resident of Somerville with two young, school-aged children. And we have a lot of the same concerns that were already asked, but I have a couple others that haven't been addressed. I know that Tufts has set up special housing to quarantine students if they do become ill. Do you know if there's a backup plan just in case they expire that? You know, if they use up all that housing? Or are they also using that housing for off-campus students? Because again, living in the area with off-campus kids, if they do test positive, are they going to be quarantining, you know, in our, basically below us, in our two-family house? Or are they going to be housed in the Tufts quarantine area? I'm also wondering if Tufts has to publish their rate of positives versus negatives tests that are happening, and how they're being held accountable so that if things are going in a direction that, you know, are not favorable for the town or the school, if they're actually going to disclose it? And then will there be action taken against it? So, yeah, just really concerned about them opening without really involving the community and, you know, puts us all at risk. And I think somebody already said it with us, you know, if they get all the reward and the benefit, and then we have to take on all the risk. So thank you very much for holding the meeting.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have Donna Adams. Donna, are you there? Donna Adams.
Hi.
Yes, you have the floor.
I'm very concerned about this. I'm 65, and my partner's 77. We live right near the campus. And it just feels like a perfect storm. We're, it's a highly contagious virus, which is ready to give rage if it's given fuel, and the fuel will be the students in the community. The university is situated in Medford and Somerville. We're really densely populated, and we have an influx of students from states that have high infection rates. This all feels like an unproven experiment by Tufts that's being forced upon us. There's extremely high elements of risk. Many, many promises or things that Tufts is saying are going to happen could fail. And if we look at TV, we see that there, it shows that there's a cohort, this age cohort, they're not afraid of getting the virus. They don't want to, a lot of them don't want to follow mitigation procedures. And we have cases ticking up. And the president, like someone said earlier of Tufts, he says, "Well, that's because there's more testing going on." It's very concerning to me. And one thing, also just from last night's meeting, President Monaco never mentioned anything about all students living on campus. He seemed to skip over that case. He had, you know, he's presented students online, partially back and fully back, all students fully back, and he presented that was the best case. That was his presentation. But he never talked about all the students being on the campus and not down here. So I felt like last night's presentation was lacking, and I'm extremely concerned. And I'm hoping someone can do something to stop this from happening. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have Andrew Franks. Andrew, are you there?
Hi. Hi, thank you so much. I also attended Tufts' community meeting last night, and a number of people have already raised some of the issues that I've thought about, in particular, students off-campus. As we know, college students are just getting to test the waters of their different, of their freedom as adults. But it's worrying to me that Tufts is going to rely solely on the student's word for contact tracing. So if a student was at a party, they're not going to want to get in trouble. They're not going to want to get the host in trouble. And so it worries me that they're not using a lot of electronic tools that might be at their disposal to speed up and have more accurate contact tracing among the student body, in particular, those who are off-campus. And then a second question that I sort of have is, and I know you're not answering questions tonight, is resources from the city to us in the neighborhoods about how we can help report off-campus noncompliance with students or even other residents in Somerville. Given what I've heard tonight and last night, I'm not sure I trust calling Tufts Police Department to come and check in on their students and keep the Somerville residents and community's health and safety in mind when they're breaking up the parties and gatherings and following up later in whether they're continuing to hold parties in subsequent weekends. So thank you so much, and have a good night.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have Kate Douglas. Kate, are you there? Kate Douglas. Kate Douglas, going once, going twice? Kate? Okay, I'm going to move on. And if anyone else still wishes to speak, please use the hand icon. I see we have Fred Berman.
Thanks for having me. Yep, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, thanks for having the hearing. Thanks to the 19 folks who requested this and have been meeting to talk about these issues for a while. You know, I think some of the concerns that are voiced here are sort of typical of the kinds of ongoing concerns about whether Tufts is paying their fair share of the costs that they generate for the community. I think they, those costs are human as well as monetary. And I think that even under the best of circumstances, bringing as many people into the community as Tufts is planning on doing to hold its sessions on campus will result in challenges and perhaps, perhaps serious problems. I guess I'd love to see a commitment to ongoing coordination and supporting the city's ability to participate in that coordination, which costs extra staffing. I guess I'd like to see a plan that involves accountability and consequences. And I'd just like to see the kind of openness about what's going on, levels of testing, results of testing, incidents, so that we can understand as a city how things are going and we can work with Tufts to address problems as they inevitably arise. So, thank you.
All right, I see Kate Douglas has logged back in and raised her hand again. So we'll give that another shot. Kate, are you there?
Hi, can you hear me this time?
We can hear you.
Awesome, thanks, Matt. So I am a service worker. I live in Somerville. I work in Somerville, already risking my life when I go to work to serve people alcohol. Also, my partner works at Tufts, and I'm extremely concerned about all of this. I think Tufts' plan is completely reckless. The meeting last night was insulting. It was incredibly tailored to make Tufts look good and like they're prepared without actually providing substantial information. There is significant pushback from employees at Tufts that Tufts is actively trying to squash. This is in addition to all the reopening plans and also the fact that they have this entire time refused to give any workers hazard pay. They also won't hire extra staff to help alleviate people who are going to be overburdened during this plan. But also, I'm really concerned, like many people, about the lack of enforcement that seems to be part of their plan, especially for off-campus, but also on-campus students and staff. I'm also really concerned about the mental health in addition to just the normal well-being of students and staff. There seems to be no consideration for the psychological impact this plan will have on everyone involved. I'm also really concerned about their rapid testing plan and whether that's antigen testing or molecular testing, since antigen testing can give a very high rate of false negatives, which would have a really much higher risk factor for our community. I'm frankly just really concerned, and that is all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have Joyce Short. Joyce, are you there? Joyce Short. Joyce Short, going once, going twice? Up there you are, Joyce.
Okay, here I am. Sorry for the, I've never been a good at technology. I do want to thank the City Council for holding this hearing. And as many others said already, it was an insulting way to be treated last night, and I'm glad that so many of us recognize that. One thing I heard several times is President Monaco saying how wonderful it was to work with the mayors of Somerville and Medford. And he said it, you know, in many different contexts. And I'm very curious about what this work was that they did together that as far as I know, and maybe other people can correct me, has not been public information in any way. And I know that the mayor has been working on a pilot agreement with the negotiating committee for quite a while about payment in lieu of taxes. And I haven't really seen a warm relationship between Tufts and the city on those issues. So I would really like to know whether the City Council has been involved in any discussions or there's any element of the city government that's participated with Tufts so far, because it did sound as if there was a, you know, great agreement between the mayors and Tufts. So, thank you.
All right, I thank you. I can't remember if I called Monica Holland, but I will call upon you again just to check. Monica Holland, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you. Thanks for a second chance. And thanks also for holding this hearing. I was also on the call last night, and I was very surprised by several aspects of it that other people have spoken to. I would just like to raise two points, I think that haven't been touched on. One is that the president seemed to indicate that testing wouldn't begin until sort of the middle of August. The testing was really still kind of like two weeks away. But it's clear that students are already moving back. We live very close to campus, and there are many new faces around. And I would be very surprised if many of them aren't Tufts students. And some of them are wearing masks and some aren't. So it's sort of mixed. So all of these people, presumably many of them Tufts students, are here now, but Tufts is not testing them, right? So the selling point of their plan was that we're going to, you know, hold all these kids in quarantine until they have three negative tests. But that obviously isn't happening, because a lot of them are already here. The second point is, someone asked the president how accurate the tests they'll be using are, given, I think, that the students take their own samples. And I guess they take samples from sort of lower in the nose than you would get if you're doing a professionally taken sample. The president said he didn't know how accurate the tests were, but he said that because they were being done twice a week, it sort of didn't matter. And I was just blown away by that. Yeah. So I guess in closing, I just want to say that it seems to me that our community has done an extraordinary job of reducing our rate of infection. And we have, as citizens, paid into this bank account. And it just seems like Tufts is going to withdraw everything. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Lindsay Patterson, although I don't see the mic working. I'll give you a moment, Ms. Patterson, if you'd like to speak. We'll come back to you. We have Joe Kislow. Joe, are you there?
I am.
All right, you have the floor.
Thank you very much for having the City Council meeting. I, too, attended the meeting yesterday and found it a bit tone-deaf. They focused a lot on Tufts itself and how Tufts is protecting itself and didn't really address how Tufts was protecting the community, which I think was sort of the purpose of the meeting. So I think I'm echoing a lot of what I'm hearing in the meeting today. So, I think I'm echoing a lot of what I'm hearing in the meeting today. It was a bit tone deaf. Like other people, I also had questions which are not answered. During the meeting, they said that students would be tested twice a week and most staff would be tested one or two times a week. I think that was really meant to provide optics of a high level of confidence. That's certainly more tests than I've had this week for COVID. But like a previous commenter mentioned, they didn't address how accurate the brogue test was. And that was really disappointing because I was actually the person who put in the question asking how accurate it was. And they actually refused to answer it by saying it had already been answered. They really didn't specify whether it's an antigen test or PCR test. They said they were going to use a front of nose rather than the back of throat, which is what's typical of every COVID test I've read about on the internet. Also, they're not going to be administered by a nurse or medical professional, they're going to be self-administered. So, in comparison, Somerville provides free testing and they use PCR testing, it's administered by a nurse and it's done to the back of the throat. And even given all those additional things, they're still false negatives. So, I want to echo a point that was mentioned earlier. I think this is going to give students a level of confidence that's possibly unjustified. And given that they weren't really able to answer the question of how effective the test would be, I'm not sure they necessarily know. And I think when people think of, these guys will be tested twice a week, people need to put that in the context that we don't really know how accurate that test would be. Thank you.
All right, thank you. That is the last speaker I have listed. I'll give one more chance for anybody to use the hand icon, to raise your hand and speak. And if not, we will close this, we'll move on to other items, but I'll give one more chance for people to speak. I say Robert McLaughlin, a man after my own name. Mr. McLaughlin, you have the floor. Robert McLaughlin, there you are.
Hi, this is Kathy McLaughlin, Robert's wife.
Hi, Kathy, you have the floor.
I also attended the meeting last night and I feel the same way that everybody previous to me has felt. There was no real plan for noncompliance, no specifics. And it reminds me of back when they had all the drug and drinking issues and Tufts was supposed to be overseeing that and it didn't work. And I feel like we're being lied to again by Tufts. I am very concerned that they're going to have student ambassadors to oversee other students, which is gonna, is not going to work because these students are going to be under a lot of pressure. They're young kids coming from other places. And my other thing that I want to point out is that 46% of students coming in, which is about 2,500 students, are going to be coming from high COVID states. So, I'm very concerned about that. I don't feel like Tufts is trustworthy and I don't feel like they were very honest or that they gave us enough information last night to prove that they're actually considering how this is going to affect the community. I live right down the street and I'm very, very concerned about these students coming back. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone else out there who would like to speak? Please use the hand icon. I'm gonna go through the list one more time. Frank Lee. Frank, are you there?
Yes, I am here. So, my name is Frank Lee and I live in Davis Square. And I think from, from what we're seeing, the way that Tufts is treating this is like the opening shot of a negotiation where they are going to lowball us and then we need to fire back with, with some kind of a counter offer. And so, what I would like to see the City Council investigate and perhaps the office of the mayor, is what legal leverage do we have to just shut them down? Like just shut them down, like Board of Health, any type of zoning or anything like that? Yes, so that we have some leverage in this negotiation, because they're just going to steamroll right over us right now. And unless we do something fast, we're not going to get the answers that we want. I yield the rest of my time.
All right, thank you. And I'm glad I keep checking because we have Beverly Schwartz. And if anybody else wishes to speak, please raise the hand icon. If I don't hear from anyone else after this, we're going to end the public hearing. But Beverly, you have the floor.
Hi, I'm Beverly Schwartz, I live in Ward 1. There are two things I would like to ask of Tufts. One is for them to show us or City Council what they're actually giving their returning students, like what their students see as the rules for this, you know? Because that's going to say a lot. And then the second thing is how, you know, if the students are self-administering, what's going to keep them from just, if they think they might have COVID, just get their friend to give the sample instead? So, how do they, what plan do they have to keep students from cheating? And I will yield the rest of my time.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Michelle Hochberg. If anyone else wishes to speak, please use the hand icon now, otherwise we're going to close this hearing. All right, I don't see anyone else looking to speak. We will keep this public hearing open until August 21st. If people would like to talk to the City Council, you can email us at citycouncil@somervillema.gov. You can also contact the mayor's office and you can contact your individual counselor. Thank you all for attending. I know some counselors have requested to speak and I will start with Counselor Rosetti. Counselor Rosetti, are you there?
Mr. President, yes, I'm here, thank you very much. I want to echo what our sixth member of the community reported this evening and when he or she, I can't recall, I think it was a gentleman, he used the term arrogant. And honestly, I've been, I didn't sleep last night, I've been thinking all day how to best handle this and I wanted to wait for this evening's meeting. I wanted to speak to the AG's office because one of our last citizens said, what legal leverage do we have to shut them down? And I too want to know that. I'd like to share with those who were not able to listen in last night to the webinar that was hosted by Tufts as to what was said. President Monaco represented, he said that students would be asked to always wear masks outside of their bedrooms. And that's exactly how he said it, they would be asked. What also bothered me was I heard that students, again, will be testing themselves, the first time they will be tested by a professional. Every test thereafter will be at the responsibility of the student themselves. Are you kidding me? What planet are these people on that think that this is going to be able to be done and be accurate? Then, this is a very special one. This slide, one of the slides read, they can host a party, if they're hosting a party for 40 or more individuals, that would result in serious disciplinary actions. Forty or more to host a party. I quote you from what was on the slide. Then later on, we learned that what was said, and I again quote you, we are limiting visitors to the campus, including our libraries, okay? Then they went on to talk about the shuttle services, they're going to limit their shuttle services, there won't be as many shuttle services as normal, but they're surely going to keep shuttling those students over to Tufts, oh, excuse me, over to Davis Square. So, let's just spread the wealth, let's just spread the germs, shall we? When, one of the questions was asked, how would the students be held responsible if they don't obey the policies? If, in example, the question was, if a student misses a COVID test, what would be, what would happen, what would, how would Tufts handle that? President Monaco responded, their ID, I believe, will be shut down. I believe. Are you kidding? There was concern, including myself, of the students who are not living on campus, those students need to immediately quarantine. So, how will they get their food shopping done, et cetera? They can't have deliveries because that's part of the process. Many residents were upset who reached out to me, whose questions were not asked publicly last night. And one member in particular forwarded his testimony to us for this. I hope we have it through Clerk Long's communication at our later meeting, but he raised a very good point. He was asking Tufts, Governor Baker has issued a COVID-19 travel order. The order lays out very specific guidelines for how travelers are to quarantine. One portion of that is that the travelers must separate from all other people for 14 days. The living quarters must have a separate bathroom facility for each individual. Are you going to tell me that all the students living off-campus are going to, four students living in a apartment, each, they have four bathrooms? I don't think so. I don't think so. I could go on further and further and further, Mr. President. This is appalling, it's beyond my imagination that somebody who's supposed to be that smart in his position of this, of this university would be that arrogant in the way they handled last night and the way they're handling our whole community by putting all of us in danger. I want to hear from our administration tonight, tonight, Mr. President. If we have to go in recess for two hours, I'll wait. I want to hear from our administration tonight, what this, what the heck made this happen? Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Rosetti. We would ask the counselor or the, any representative of the city if they wish to respond, but before that, I will go through the order because a lot of people want to speak now. I have Counselor Niedergang and Counselor Struzzo and Counselor Scott, and then we have more. So, Counselor Niedergang, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I won't add to what community members and Counselor Rosetti have said, but I do want to highlight the two questions that I have. The first is, what is the city's power over Tufts on this? And I'd like to hear from, from the administration and the Solicitor's Office, what powers do we have to control, constrain, restrict what Tufts is doing? And secondly, like Counselor Rosetti, I would like to hear from the administration as soon as possible about this. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Counselor Struzzo and Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. I echo my colleagues' concerns and totally agree with them. And I do want to know what the City Council can do about this. And I'm also imploring the Chair of Public Health and Public Safety to address this as soon as possible and to establish a meeting so we could at least get into discussions with this in public health, public safety. But also, Mr. President, would you be putting forward a motion to discuss this in public health, public safety, or can I?
No, we'll just refer this item to public health and safety, which will enable us to speak about it.
Okay. I feel like this, honestly, this Tufts reopening, it's a matter of time. And also, the fact that Tufts chairs a building, in the TAB building, with the Council on Aging, I don't know where to begin with that. And also with the mask ordinance, is this, is this Somerville's responsibility as we have students that are not only coming from all over the world to stay here, but also are probably coming from many communities where mask ordinance is art in place? And, and they're not required to wear a mask and may not even have a mask and may not even know about our mask ordinance, I'm really concerned about that. So, I do pose a question, who is responsible, who's going to be responsible off-campus for the students? Are we supposed to just start a whole new, like, freshen up our mask ordinance information or what exactly is going to happen? That's all I have to say. And of course, parties, off-campus parties, really concerned about this. Thank you very much for letting me speak a moment.
All right, thank you. Counselor Davis would like to respond to the request for a panel committee meeting.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
All right, excellent, thank you. I'm just on, on audio here. So, yeah, thank you, Counselor Struzzo, I share your concern about this. I in fact did reach out to the president about holding a public hearing in committee, which I'm thankful that the president has held now tonight in the full council. I will be in communication with the president about our schedule and we're only a couple weeks away from the end of our recess, so I would anticipate we'll do something after the recess is over. But if there's, you know, I recognize the concern and the timing of these students coming back. You know, as has been said, there's, we are limited in our power of what we can do, but I'm certainly willing, if the president feels it's appropriate and we determine that there's a path to take forward to schedule a meeting as soon as possible, whether that's immediately after the recess ends or prior.
All right, we have Counselor Scott. Let's see, Counselor Scott, Klingon, Ba and White.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, you know, I really appreciate everybody coming out and I appreciate you holding a special meeting for us to talk about this. I would also like to hear from the mayor about this because fundamentally, it's his emergency powers, it's the declaration of emergency grants, broad powers to the executive to regulate businesses and the operations of any public accommodation. You know, a few things that were brought up in the public hearing, talking about, you know, people with a high risk tolerance and an unjustified level of confidence, that's basically a definition of a college student, at least definition me when I was a college student. That, you know, it's not just the students are coming back to campus, you know, they're coming back to campus with frankly, lower compliance levels with public health measures that we've asked everybody in Somerville to do, and that have been a struggle to implement and continue to be. One of the, one of the things that I think the administration is in a good job of balancing is understanding that if you have too strict a set of rules, compliance drops off and then as compliance drops off, that snowballs because people see that others aren't following the rules. And so, it's easy for them to say, well, nobody's doing this, why am I? As was said, we've all collectively made deposits into the public health bank over the last four and a half months and it's been successful. We've made those deposits to keep our community and our neighbors safe and we're continuing to do this, right? People who have recreation facilities, people who have gyms, people who have businesses, yoga studios. These are people that are still closed down now, when the rest of the state has said they can be open, because we've made the determination that the risk is just too great and we're too close to having to roll this back. Whether or not classes actually happen on-site, the fact that Tufts has communicated to its students that it's okay to come back to Massachusetts, it's okay to come back to Somerville has already put the city at greater risk. And so, I would, I just also echo the call for our mayor to address the public about this. And I would appreciate if he could be invited to come speak to the City Council on the record on this, because I, the situation changes rapidly. All those, all those kids got sent home real fast last semester. The question of when we hit that tipping point here and at what, at what cost, both to the students on that campus and to the people in the community, is one, is, I'm afraid that costs you too high and those thresholds have not been clearly set, along with the whole host of other concerns about how we even monitor the situation on the campus. So, I appreciate the concerns from the community, I completely share them and I implore the mayor to come to the City Council and address these issues sooner rather than later, because quite frankly, you know, we don't return to session until three weeks from today. Three weeks from today is probably going to be a fair bit too late. We all saw at the start of this pandemic what an incredible difference three months can make or three, three weeks can make. So, because I do believe it's time sensitive and I am willing to attend any special meetings this council needed in order to, in order to get this information out to the public and ensure that we keep our constituents safe. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, we have Counselor Klingon, Ba, White and Ballantyne.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to our fellow colleagues and the folks at home listening. First off, thank you to the residents who brought this up. You know, sometimes when, as ward counselors, you know, things tend to not really always be on our radar, even though it's a citywide issue. But when an institution might happen to be located in one particular area. So I wasn't paying close attention until I had heard that Tufts did have a plan to bring students back. And I was really puzzled by that, you know? As I said, we focus on our ward issues. I'm focusing on shootings every couple of days in my ward. And I see that our mayor, who I applaud, who has been out front on all of this COVID stuff from day one and kind of setting the tone, setting the example for everybody. I was shocked that, you know, based on his sort of, you know, restrictive, sort of like, his very, very measured approach, very cautious approach, that he was, that I didn't hear very much from him on Tufts reopening. And that kind of puzzled me because I, again, as the leader of our city who, who has, you know, held us back into phase two, which I completely support. I think he's done a great job with many of these things, you know? But meanwhile, our businesses are suffering. You know, we have to, we have, we have small businesses that are just, I mean, they're just hanging on. They're gasping for air right now. And we're just going to go ahead and let these thousands of children, you know, students come back into our, our community based on the fact that Mr. Monaco states that, you know, he's got the Broad Institute, who I think very, was very, a good point to be brought up by the, by the public, that, you know, how do we know that the Broad can handle this much more, this many more Tufts's capacity? You know, I know a few schools have already reversed in the last couple of days. Smith College, Simmons College, they've reversed. They are not going to open up. It just seems like, you know, we're asking, we've done all the work. We've done, we've made the sacrifices. Our businesses are suffering and we've made the sacrifices to say, you know, we're going to play it safe. We're going to do what we need to do to make sure that our citizens are safe. And then it's like a slap in the face. And then all this institution is just going to bring back, you know, these thousands and thousands of people into our, into our city. And they got it all under control. Like, it just seems really insulting for one thing. And we know that, you know, man, I don't have, there's not much love lost for Tufts in terms of being a community partner from my point of view, especially when it comes to workers. I mean, they laid off their workers for this whole, during the whole COVID thing. They laid them off, you know, without pay. Obviously, they were probably getting unemployment. But my question is, is that when they come back, when they're forced to come back to take care of these conditions, first of all, are they going to even, they should increase their staffing level if there's, if they're going to have all these, you know, stiffer cleaning, more areas to clean and a much stiffer cleaning protocol. If those workers, you know, do get COVID, will they be compensated at home? I don't know what their benefit packages are like right now. But I would imagine, I would, I would hope that, you know, an institution that we're supposed to be supporting as a community treats their workers how we would, we would, you know, imagine it and hope that they would treat them. And the last thing I want to say is, you know, well, two things. One, I think it is a very important point about monitoring what's going on on that campus. So I do hope that the administration will come forward with what it is that they're doing to monitor those. Quite frankly, I hope that we can actually reverse this thing. I know people are already moving in. I was surprised to even hear that this was happening. And I also listened last night and I did hear, I did watch the PowerPoint and I heard President Monaco and I wasn't at all put at ease, especially since I know that, you know, we're counting like infected cases and stuff. But I don't think that people understand that, you know, even when people don't die, we're seeing like long-term health effects from this thing. So like, so we're, you know, whether or not, okay, well, the numbers are this way, that way. I don't want to get this thing. And I don't think any, I don't want anybody in my family to get it. Not because I might, maybe I won't die. But quite frankly, they don't know the long-term effects. It's affecting everybody differently. And many, many people are, you know, having long-term respiratory effects and other things that they don't even fully understand yet. So I don't think we should be playing Russian roulette, you know, because, you know, our kids don't even go back into the school, but we're going to bring all these kids back into the community. So, so I really, really hope that we can get some answers and get some action on this and maybe reverse it. But I am definitely surprised and disappointed that this administration has not taken a harder line against the return of this many students and people to our area. Thank you.
And next we have Counselor Ba, Counselor Wyatt, and Counselor Ballantyne.
Thank you, Mr. President, for the recognition. Also, thank you for having this public hearing. That's a sign of good leadership. I also want to thank the resident that initiated the public hearing. You know, it's always good to have community members that are close to the ground and know, you know, what is going on and also bringing it to our attention. I also want to thank the members of the public who spoke tonight. I just want to reassure them that, you know, I for one, I know that it is our duty, you know, as a government to represent our community. So we are listening. So it's been also really confusing for me that Tufts has decided to reopen. Because perhaps maybe they, you know, had this initial plan maybe a long time ago or maybe a few weeks ago because of the trend in which this pandemic was moving, you know, in Massachusetts. But now that we are seeing a resurgence, like the words of the Honorable Niedigang, that it's never too late, you know, to fix a mistake. So they can still cautiously, you know, backtrack and, you know, come back at the appropriate time. But right now, you know, this is not the safest time, you know, to do this. So I will implore our administration to actually say something about this because I also don't know what we can do, you know, as City Council. Thank you, Mr. President.
We have Counselor Wyatt and Counselor Ballantyne.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been thinking about this for a while. A number of constituents reached out to me and then the talk tonight about leverage. What leverage do we have? Well, Tufts has to come to the City Council to get lodging permits. And they haven't come in yet. So I guess I would have a question for the city clerk is when their current ones expire? Because that is certainly something that we can utilize as a City Council in deciding what is located in Somerville and what, whether we will permit it and also what conditions we can put on it. So tomorrow I will contact the City Solicitor's Office so that therefore, you know, as Chair of the Committee, I and the members of the Committee will be prepared to determine what actions we can take when these come to us. And with the permission of the Chair, I'd ask Mr. Long if he knows when the ones that were granted last year expire?
Mr. Clerk, do you have that information available?
Yes, through the Chair, those licenses expired July 31st. They renew, they're annually run from August through July.
Okay, so through the President, so John, they haven't filed them yet. So technically, if they have people housed there, they don't have the permitting for it. I mean, is that right?
I'm not an attorney, Mr. Counselor Wyatt, but that's certainly my understanding, yes.
Okay, so it looks like we have a problem with that. So I will contact the City Solicitor's Office tomorrow on both regard to the ability of Tufts to house students at lodging houses, you know, their dorms and stuff that aren't permitted by the City of Somerville because they've expired. Contact the Board of Health on that. And then also be prepared, again, as a City Council, the restrictions and what abilities we have when those permits come before us to basically reflect the voice of the community, to make sure that the concerns that were raised now can be addressed as conditions on that permit, on those permits. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Ballantyne, and then I, I'm going to call upon Kusheer Weber to speak after this if the city has any response to the comments tonight. Counselor Ballantyne.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I wanted to just put a little context for any of our listeners today or this evening is that I, as the Ward Counselor, was contacted by Tufts University after they had spoken to the administration at the end of June that they were thinking about having, that they were putting a plan together, a plan together to return their students. Soon after that, I contacted the administration in order to hear what their thoughts were on Tufts's plan. And there was a joint meeting set up on July 10th. And that was when I started to get quite concerned that Tufts University was in its similar plan of not letting its neighbors know what's, what's happening. And I requested very strongly that they host a community meeting to let the neighbors know, but also to hopefully get input from the neighbors so that it could affect the plan. The City Council is going on recess and they came back and they said, yes, they would do the community meeting. So that's sort of the backdrop to that. And, you know, we all know that we're in the middle of a pandemic with the rates of positive testing and deaths are increasing. And we all know that Somerville is the most densely populated city in New England. And the mayor publicly repeats this as his reason for the city being very conservative and taking cautious approaches to reopening our businesses. And we also know that there's no Phase 3 opening in Somerville as of today. We're still in Phase 2. And to be extra cautious, the mayor even just changed the Somerville Public Schools reopening plan. So last week, our Somerville Public Schools were supposed to open in a hybrid model, which means that partial learning was supposed to happen in school, physically in school and partial remote learning. Then this week, we are at 100% remote learning until further notice. This was done because we were told because of safety. So where does the administration stand on Tufts reopening? This has been a number one concern of residents. I asked this question a month ago. I put it in writing three times to the administration, asked them probably four other times verbally that, you know, will the Tufts plan ruin all of the diligent work that residents have done for the last five months? I, I don't have an answer to the question that I've asked. And after the community meeting that was hosted last night, I'm concerned, even more concerned. And I've received feedback, about 74 communications between last night and today. And over 95% were disappointed with many of the questions not being answered, that were submitted ahead of time, opening up without notifying the community ahead of time and asking for input, lack of clarity in compliance and enforcement for student living off-campus, calling Tufts Police Department has rarely worked in the past. Why would it be considered that it would work now? Missing a mobility plan, a share street plans, which again, I requested over a month ago. And lack of faith that student behaviors will change. So those were the points that I've heard overwhelmingly and certainly were repeated tonight. And then the two overarching questions that I've asked the administration and certainly was mentioned tonight was, what does the City of Somerville enforcement authority lie? What can, what are our legal resources on Tufts? And does the administration support the plan? So as Mr., as the good president mentioned, I too would like to sponsor the administration, Ms. Weber or Director Connor, to answer these questions. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Ballantyne wishes to sponsor Ms. Weber to speak. Ms. Weber, are you there?
I am, Mr. President. Can everyone hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Great, thank you. Thank you all for your questions about the administration's response to the Tufts reopening. As a result of conversations with Counselor Ballantyne earlier and other comments and feedback we have received from the community, we are currently in the process of drafting a memo that we hope will answer some of the concerns and the questions that the council and the community has raised regarding the city's authority, the city's authority in relation to the university as well as, as well as the level of interaction that the city has had in Tufts' development of this plan, the oversight that we, oversight authority that we have. So my hope is that the administration will be able to submit that memo shortly. Unfortunately, we were not able to get it together for submission tonight. But we will, providing it shortly to the council.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak? I'm going to speak before we move on. But does anyone else wish to speak on this item?
Mr. President, it's Counselor Rosetti.
Counselor Rosetti.
So then what would be our plan if we receive this communication from the administration tomorrow? I do not want to wait three weeks to have a committee meeting on this. This is a rapidly moving target. And I don't want to have on my shoulders the death of people. So I want, I want to know what we will do when we receive this memo.
I'll answer that. So I will talk offline about scheduling a committee meeting. I agree that it's very important to get it down as soon as possible. So that won't be an issue for us. Does anyone else have any other comments or questions, though? I hear none. I just want to weigh in really quick because everyone else spoke as well. But, you know, I don't actually blame Tufts for wanting to open. I think like a lot of businesses and institutions in the city, if they had the ability to open, everything would be open right now. But the city has decided wisely to move with caution and restrict the openings of many businesses. We're still in Phase 2 when the rest of the state is in Phase 3. And it just seems like Tufts is exempt from our own rules that we have right now. We, I understand their needs. They want to get back to work. They want to get back to normal. We all want to get back to normal. But that's why we have governments to make sure that people just don't do anything they want depending on like, at the consequence of public health. And I don't hear a response to that. I think we're going to get a response, but it sounds like Tufts is going to open. I don't think we're going to hear from the city that Tufts is not opening. So the non-answer is really the answer to the public. If people are waiting for a response, the response is that Tufts is opening and the mayor has no intentions on doing anything about that. We halted Phase 3. You know, just last week, the mayor announced that we were going to have a hybrid method of reopening our own schools. And then a week later, unilaterally decided that we're going to do all remote with no real consultation or seeking advice from the school committee at all. We've halted Phase 2. With Phase 3, we're still in Phase 3. I haven't been in City Hall for months. City Hall has been closed and it'll probably be closed for the rest of the year at the very least. So the mayor has taken very bold steps to protect this community that I respect. But one of the problems I have is he seems still incapable of standing up to powerful institutions and telling them that they're going to respect the rules just like everybody else. And in the case of Tufts University, it's a billion-dollar institution. They provide a lot of services to the city, but they also have to be held to a standard that we've decided. In terms of people asked on the public, you know, what can the city do about this? Do we have any power? People are going to tell you that we have no power. But I remember at the very beginning of this pandemic, there were open conversations about seizing private property for public uses to combat coronavirus. And we could certainly have health inspectors go to these And we could certainly have health inspectors go to these buildings and enforce the rules that we have where people aren't allowed indoors. Like, we can't, we haven't been indoors together since the beginning of this, but now Tufts University is going to have thousands of students from around the world congregating together, having parties with 39 people apparently, and not having a problem with that. So, you know, people really enjoy flexing their power until it comes down to challenging other powerful institutions. And I really think the city needs to step up on this. It's not good enough to just give a memo and say, we hear your concerns. I think these concerns need to be addressed. So unless anyone else has anything else to say, I am going to lay this item on the table. We're going to refer to the Public Health and Safety Committee, and we will schedule that meeting offline as soon as possible. Does anyone else have any other comments? Counselor Davis?
You asked during the other day?
Counselor Davis? Take a late item out of order that's related to the Tufts item. You have no objections. Mr. Clerk, can you please read the lead item? And can everyone please mute your phones or your cameras?
Yes, Mr. President. The late item submitted by Counselor Davis is a resolution that the administration and the Traffic Commission take all steps to remove without delay the dedicated Tufts Shuttle stops and all associated signage in Ward 6, including in particular those in Davis Square.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to my colleagues. I, you know...
Sorry, Counselor Davis accidentally muted. Are you there? Are you still there? Something happened, because I don't see him listed as attending right now. I think we might have lost Counselor Davis. While we wait, I have Counselor Rosetti. Valentine would like to sign on. And Counselor Valentine, why don't you comment while we try to get Counselor Davis back online? Oh, you're muted as well. There, can you speak?
Yes, now, thank you. No, no worries. Thank you, Mr. President. So I thank Counselor Davis for putting in this ordinance. I had this exact conversation with the administration in terms of the mobility plans and the fact that a Tufts shuttle can have public space in Davis Square and students queuing up in already a dense square where we're trying to keep social distancing, and that there should be strong consideration, because I couldn't get ahold of Counselor Davis to talk about this. So I'm glad he was thinking about this, but that there should be thoughts to reconsider the shuttle, and it certainly shouldn't be on public property. So I'm happy to sign on to this and thank him for that.
All right, Counselor Davis, are you there? Counselor Davis, he tells me by text that he can hear us, but I don't see your name All right, Lance is, Counselor Davis is going to call back. Any further discussion on this item? Here are none. This Counselor Scott would like to sign on. Here are no further discussion. This item will be laid on the table, and we can come back to it. Counselor White, you had an order you wanted to take out of order?
Yes, I'd move to take Item 21. It's a communication from the Chair of the Licensing Commission, who's in attendance here. So I'd like to take it up, take it up in case any members have questions, and I believe that the Commissioner did receive a response from Tufts, so it seems an appropriate time to discuss it.
All right, Counselor White would like to take Item 21 out of order, seeing no discussion. Mr. Clerk, please read that order.
Yes, Mr. President. Item 21 is a communication from the Licensing Commission conveying a letter to Tufts University to reinforce its outdoor dining guidelines.
Counselor White.
So I would sponsor Mr. Lynch, since he is in attendance, as Chair of the Commission, to speak briefly on it.
All right, let me find Mr. Lynch.
He's unmuted, Mr. President.
You are muted, Mr. Lynch. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, Joe Lynch, Chairman of the Somerville Licensing Commission. The Licensing Commission understood that Tufts University would be reopening their campus to students, faculty, and visitors. In anticipation of those students, faculty, and visitors visiting some of our outdoor dining establishments, as well as some of the indoor restaurants that are now open, I sent at the direct, at my direction to the City Clerk's office, we sent a letter to Dr. Monaco, President Monaco at Tufts University, requesting their cooperation for the dissemination of the information about outdoor dining in the City of Somerville. Those included the rules and regulations that the dining establishments have to abide by in order to keep those temporary licenses going, as well as some of the other rules and regulations that we expected the diners and the visitors to the establishments to follow. I did that as a preemptive. At 6 o'clock tonight, we received a response from Rocco DeRico, who is the Director of Government and Community Relations, saying that he would work very closely with the administration and with the Licensing Commission to disseminate that information to the Tufts campus, not only to the students, but to the faculty and to the visitors, about what the rules and regulations are when that community is visiting our establishments during COVID. So I want to limit my remarks basically to those restaurants and the outdoor seating establishments that have been granted by the Licensing Commission. We're asking for their cooperation. They have emailed back tonight, saying they will cooperate with the Licensing Commission in disseminating that information through the City Clerk's office. I intend to contact Mr. DeRico tomorrow morning and request a meeting with him to ensure that the public health and the public safety of all residents and businesses and workers of Somerville are known to the visitors, the students, and the faculty of the Tufts University community that are coming back to our city. That response, I will request the City Clerk's office to send that to all members of the City Council. Again, we only received it at 6 o'clock tonight, but if there are any questions about how the Licensing Commission and what the Licensing Commission has authority over, the reason for my request was to ask Tufts University for their cooperation. The last thing this commission wants to do is to have to shut down or amend the licenses for any of our restaurants due to the behavior or the non-compliance by anyone from the Tufts community. So, Mr. President, I can answer any questions about what authority we have and what we are going to be working with Tufts University on.
All right, do we have any questions for Mr. Lynch? Counselor Valentine?
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Mr. Lynch, can you just give an example of how this, you know, how compliance or enforcement would work?
Through the President to Counselor Valentine, unfortunately, all of the enforcement powers that the Licensing Commission will be levied upon the license holder and not necessarily the visitors or the patrons of the establishment. So two weeks ago, we sent out our guidelines to the Somerville Police Department, ISD, and the health inspectors about what was being required for the outdoor dining, whether that was on public or private property, and the expected behavior of the patrons. So the restaurateurs over the last month that have been allowed to reopen on public and private property with their expanded seating, very, very grateful, the commission is very grateful, that they have all been abiding by the rules and regulations. They've been doing a terrific job with their patrons. But we also sent as an attachment, and I think the council has that attachment that was sent to President Monaco, about what are the expected rules and regulations for our restaurants? Some of those are pay very particular attention to the behavior of the patrons. So the patrons, as you know, Counselor Valentine, are required to wear masks when they are moving around the facilities. They are not required to wear masks when they are eating or drinking in the outdoor public or private establishments. What we've noticed, the Licensing Commission has been following what's happening across the country. Governor Cuomo and the Licensing Commission in the state of New York, to my last estimate, based on what I can read from the news reports, they have suspended, amended, or revoked almost 100 licenses in the City of New York itself for non-compliance. Some of those non-compliance has to do with the behavior of the patrons. My intent of communicating with Tufts University is to make sure that those folks who are coming into our community from outside of Somerville or outside of Massachusetts understand that our rules and regulations for restaurants are maybe different than where they live. So they are required to wear masks. They are not allowed to congregate once they finish dining. They're not allowed to congregate in groups of 10, 15, 25 people on the sidewalks. My intent, Counselor Valentine, is not to punish anyone. My intent is the public health and public safety. Those licenses that are issued to the restaurateurs and any outdoor seating have to be abided by. We're going to work with Tufts to make sure their students, their faculty, and any visitors coming into their community understand what our rules and regulations are.
Okay, great, wonderful. Through you, Mr. President. Thank you very much, Mr. Lynch, for that very thorough explanation.
All right, we have Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Commissioner Lynch, or Chairman Lynch. Sir, I appreciate that explanation, and I think the really important part here is that the licenses, the ability to operate of the restaurants that are open right now in Somerville is put at grave risk based on the behavior of, potentially the behavior of returning Tufts students. That, since that's really the only enforcement mechanism that the Licensing Commission has right now. Do I, did I boil that down correctly?
It is, it is the, through the President to Counselor Scott, it is the responsibility of the license holder that their patrons abide by the rules of the road. And the rules of the road are, you have to be over 21 to be served liquor, you have to have appropriate behavior. You know, they are protecting their licenses based on the behavior of their patrons. The enforcement authority that the Licensing Commission has is that if any of the inspectors or the Somerville Police Department are called by anyone, that could be a passerby, that could be a counselor, that could be someone observing bad behavior, those have to be investigated by any authority here in the city, whether it's an ISD inspector or a Somerville Police Department, and that puts that license holder at risk. My intent, working with Tufts, is to make sure their students understand that.
Okay, so I guess my question to you then, through the Chair, would be, or through the President, does Tufts or any affiliated entity hold a CV license or any license under the jurisdiction of our Licensing Commission currently?
Through the President, Counselor Scott, they do not, but as Counselor White indicated earlier in the hearing, there are licenses that are issued through the City Council for the boarding homes, for the boarding houses.
Well, I appreciated his attention to detail there. I look forward to taking that up in Licensing Department's committee. All right, thank you, Mr. President. I'm all set, and thank you, Chairman, for your vigilance.
All right, any further questions, so comments? All right, this item will be laid on the table and placed on file. Counselor Davis requested that the previous late order be laid on the table and referred to the Public Health and Safety Committee, and we'll next go to the next item.
Mr. President, returning to the regular order, or continuing with the regular order business, we move to item number four, which is an order submitted by Counselor Ewan Campin that the Director of Health and Human Services report to this council the feasibility of using weekly pooled COVID-19 testing or relatively affordable test strips for schoolchildren, public employees, and workers at public-facing businesses.
Counselor Ewan Campin, we haven't heard from you yet, so I expect an amazing speech.
Thank you, Mr. President, and through you, thank you to my colleagues. I was, I got caught up in a, in a family issue, and I appreciate your leadership on that issue. So on the issue of testing, so we all know it has become increasingly clear that our testing capacity, notwithstanding the incredible efforts and work that the City of Somerville has put into this, and a lot of municipalities have put into this, it is not expanding in the way that we need it to expand, and in fact, we seem to be running into many of the same or worse supply chain shortages. And to get to the level where we're having frequent surveillance-level testing, much like the Tufts University is promising on their own dime, we are going to need dramatic changes in how we approach this. And two of the major ideas that are gaining public traction are pooled testing and what is being kind of called affordable rapid testing, or these strip testing. And these are different approaches. Neither of them is totally ready for primetime, but both of them, I think it's really important that all of us start talking about this in public and start educating the public about this, as I think it is almost certain that strategies like this are going to be necessary as soon as possible. So the idea with pooled testing is you take a group of people, say, students in a class as one example, say, 10 students, and instead of testing them individually, you take a sample from each of them and then pool all of them. If all 10 are negative, which is what we hope, the entire pool is negative, but if even one of them is positive, you'll get a positive result. And what's so important about that is if one member of a school class in this example is positive, the outcome from a public health perspective needs to be the same, which is that everyone needs to be quarantined until we can then go in and do the individual testing on all those people. And I think there's an unintuitive aspect of this, because as individual members of the public, we all want accurate data about our own health, and that is totally understandable. But given the situation that we're in with testing shortages from a public health perspective, what is really essential is that we're also able to do surveillance testing of the general public at really high throughput and at regular frequency, so that we can then take those next steps to individually test people and follow up, obviously, with the treatment and the isolation. And in addition to pool testing, another option that is being promoted, especially by a doctor named Michael Mina, who's a professor at the Harvard Pool of Public Health, and I would expect that many members of the public have heard of this guy at this point. He has really been evangelizing for the idea that we should be using affordable rapid tests, of which there are some sort of available in the pipeline, but not really approved for general use. And the idea is that there is a trade-off in terms of the individual sensitivity of these tests, that the more affordable they are, the less sensitive they are in many cases, is one way to think about it. But if you have almost everybody, especially everyone who's out in public interacting, taking these regularly, you, the trade-off is enormously beneficial, and you'll still be getting, you'll be catching the vast majority of cases, even if on an individual scale, you might miss a couple. And so I've had... And so, I've, I've had conversations about these, as I imagine my colleagues have as well, with the administration, with Director Bukeye, with Tim Snyder, and I'm obviously very happy that both of them are extremely knowledgeable about this, are two steps ahead of the game, as I have come to expect from the city of Somerville, and I'm very happy about. And so, I really put this in as, to get us talking about this, to get the public talking about this, because I think that it is really essential that we start advocating for Somerville being one of the communities that uses these types of approach to just get on top of the scale of testing that we have now known we've needed for many, many months. We are still nowhere near. In some ways, we're going the opposite direction. So, I look forward to continuing to work with all of you and with the city on, on this approach.
Counselor Klingon and Davis would like to sign on. Any further discussion? Here and none. This item will be laid on the table for approval. Next item. Mr. Clark.
My apologies, Mr. President. Item five is an order submitted by the Counselor Ewan Campin, that the Director of Finance inform this council how the recent announcement of a three-month level funding of state aid will affect the fiscal year '21 budget.
Counselor Ewan Campin.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I noticed after submitting this, that Counselor Rosetti, who serves on Finance Committee, put in a very similar order. So, I'll be very brief and just mention, I think all of us were very amazed. Last week, the state legislature announced that municipalities would be receiving essentially level funding for at least three months, which we all know is quite different from what many of us expected, which was a sharp drop in state aid. So, I'm asking that this go to Finance Committee, although I just see Mr. Bean has popped up, so that we can get an update, an understanding of what this means for the city's finances.
All right. Mr. Bean, I see your face, so it must mean you want to speak.
Mr. President, if I could interject, my apologies. Could you take up my item as well, so we can kill two birds with one stone?
Yes. What item number is that again?
Eight or nine.
Eight and nine, or eight or nine?
Eight, eight or nine. It references the state aid.
Mr. Clark, can you read items eight and nine?
No, no.
Mr. President, item number nine, item number nine is an order submitted by Counselor Rosetti, that Director of Finance report to this council all actual state aid appropriations versus budgeted anticipated state aid.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Hold on. I got Counselor Rosetti and then Ballantyne. Are you all done, Counselor Rosetti?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Ballantyne?
So, I also have an item, since Mr. Bean is up. I was wondering if you could take that up also. It's towards the end of the agenda.
Item number 32.
Two. Thank you.
Thirty-one and thirty-two. Director of Finance?
Item number 31, Ms. President, is an order that Counselor Ballantyne, an order by Counselor Ballantyne, that the Director of Finance update this council tonight with an overview of municipal trends and the city's finances. And do you want to take up 32?
No, 32 is for later. No, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
It's 31. Okay. Counselor Ballantyne, you have the floor.
Mr. President, I was just simply is that we're a few months in. Yes, the level funding came in from the state, and I just felt that it was very appropriate to have the Director of Finance here to give us an update on the financial trends and the city's finances. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Bean, you have the floor.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. So, yes, it was indeed good news, and we can attest that to the lobbying by municipal officials and support from our own delegation. I do want to clarify a few points on the actions, the agreement between, with the legislature and the Baker administration. Of course, as we know, the state is suffering a very serious revenue shortage, potentially $6 billion based on the crisis, and this is far deeper than the revenue loss from 2009, 2010, and 2002, 2003. So, the action of the legislature, they cited one, is that they had difficulty projecting tax collections. We still have unanswered questions in terms of what, what additional federal aid is coming down to the states and municipalities, as well as the impacts of the, of the virus on expenses. So, legislature basically, they did not approve a 12-month budget. They, as you know, they've already approved a one-month budget, so they approved another three-month budget, a temporary budget, through October 31st, $16.5 billion. And they basically are citing the need to gather more information before they can get a final budget plan in place. So, there was an acknowledgement that of the difficulties we've all faced in trying to come up with municipal budgets based on uncertain revenue projections and uncertain expenses. So, what the legislature and the governor did do was level fund the two major accounts. That's unrestricted general government aid and Chapter 70 education aid based on fiscal 2020 numbers. But they did not necessarily level fund all state aid. We still have no finality on charter school reimbursement aid. That's a cherry sheet item. We don't have finality on aid important to the school department, like special education aid and, and charter school situation. So, I define state aid as, as revenue and assessments. Final assessments haven't been issued as well. So, we have big assessments, 8 million plus for charter school tuition and the MBTA assessment. So, those things have not been finalized. So, when we talk about level funding, we're talking about the, the two major accounts. So, what we did do is, we did level fund the Chapter 70 education aid at $20,486,000. I expected that to be level funded. But as I spoke to you at budget time, we wanted to be very conservative on the unrestricted general government aid, based on the history that we've seen in the past. We suffered a $12 billion cut over two fiscal years in 2009, 2010, and a, and a $9 million cut in 2003, 2004. So, I'm a bit surprised, but you're grateful that this crisis wasn't put on the backs of the municipalities and the situations that we're dealing with were recognized. It's very significant. So, the unrestricted general government aid, we reduced that by 25%. So, the number is 6,666,863. So, the fiscal 20 was 20,066, it was 26,755, we budgeted 20,066. So, that's a net increase of $6,666,000. Significant, and that's great news. So, I want to remind folks that we did backstop the fiscal '21 budget with free cash in the amount of $5.2 million. But I will also, again, note that what normally happens after state, state appropriations is that the Department of Revenue issues a cherry sheet. They've not done so because, again, they're recognizing that only two pieces of that cherry sheet, the two major accounts, have been appropriated at this particular point in time. So, I think that we still have other factors that need to be decided by the legislature in the next few months, those other age. So, the cherry sheet monies I distributed back to the cities and towns on a monthly basis. So, we did get our first tranche in on July 31st, and yes, the state did indeed give us 1/12th of the unrestricted general government aid and the Chapter 70 education aid. However, those other revenue accounts, the charter school reimbursement, elderly abatements, are not at a, a level funded. I do not know the rationale for the, for the money coming back at this point, something we're going to question, and something that we'll need to pursue with the legislature. So, this is only one factor of many that would be part of the final budgets, so to speak. The final budget for fiscal '21 would be based on updated revenue projections, as well as any supplemental appropriations that we would make between now and the end of November. The tax rate is essentially the final budget plan, which we submit to the Department of Revenue. So, I would, I would note that in terms of trends, what we really need to look at is the other revenues at risk for the city, and that's going to include the hotel motel excise tax, the meals tax revenues. Now, how that, those monies are reported are on a quarterly basis by the state. DOR gives us numbers on a quarterly basis, so we won't get any estimates on those two revenue sources until September 30th. And we don't get, unfortunately, micro-level information from the various restaurants, because DOR says that they cannot do that because of IRS regulations. So, we have to wait at least till September 30th to get a sense of those revenues. And of course, the fact that we have staggering now Phase 3 and staying in Phase 2 certainly is probably going to have an impact on the revenues, so we'll have to measure these revenues up against our, our projections back in June. So, the other major revenue sources, of course, are going to be the building permits, our operational revenues, parking fines, parking meter receipts, ordinance violations, motor vehicle excises. We have not, we're just starting the fiscal year. We don't have any reports from yet in the month of July, our first month. We'll be closing that very, very shortly. I would note that we did seem, we don't have final revenue numbers in fiscal '20, but our revenue loss was minimal in fiscal 2020. I'll be reporting to you the final revenue numbers, but we did, did not suffer significant revenue losses in the past fiscal year. Other factors that we have to consider in the final budget and the tax rate setting, of course, is our new growth. The assessors, the chief assessor is going to be meeting with DOR representatives at the end of this month to begin the process of determining the new growth. We projected $10 million. I'm hoping it will be higher. But also, I think, as we said, we noted earlier this evening, in terms of expenditures based on the crisis, significantly, I think that the most important consideration for expenditures going forward is going to be the returning our students and teachers safely to the classroom and providing the capability to produce remote-only learning as a, as a transition to get to hybrid and back to full classroom activity. That's going to be very, very expensive going forward. No question about that. It's probably our biggest and most high-priority expense. So, we're talking about investments in technology. We're talking about adjustments to the ventilation and filtration systems in the school buildings, virus testing and surveillance plans, cleaning and sanitation services, PPP, PPE, among many, many other things. There's an active school, the school officials, as well as city officials, are actively working on a task force to cross these things out and make plans going forward. I would just say to you that is that the monies coming forward for dealing with this need to reopen the schools, we have what is called the ESTA grant, which is kids-related, going to the school department, the amount of $993,000, and the school reopening grant of a little over $1 million, and a small school technology grant. I clearly see that we're going to be burning through that money. That's not going to be sufficient to do the job to reopen our schools. I see us burning through that pretty quickly. The next stop would then have to be the $7.1 million KES Act money on the city side, but that, that KES Act has got to deal with a whole myriad of, of community needs going forward. So, what I would say is that we need to be very cautious going forward. We backstopped the budget with $5.2 million. Your actions at budget time to put $3 million into the COVID stabilization fund will certainly help, but I would just say, I think that their expenses are going to be significant. I think that we need to look at the $5.2 million in free cash, working with you and working with DOR regulations to possibly revisit that. We may need to ask you to revoke that or reappropriate that, because I do see monies needed to deal with the crisis reopening of schools and everything else going forward. So, I always say, we're very early in the fiscal year. We'll be watching the revenues very closely. We'll be working on scoping out the expenditures going forward. That's basically, I think, where we're at at this particular point in time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bean. On the item, I have Counselor Rosetti and Counselor Scott.
Mr. President, briefly through you. Thank you, Mr. Bean, for being here this evening and for that explanation. I just wanted to remind my colleagues that when the school department was before us with their budget for fiscal year '21, they also reserved the right to come back before us in the fall if extra funding was going to be needed, and was pretty certain that they would be coming back before us. So, that's nothing new. It's also my opinion, in fiscal year '21 budget discussions, that the projections were low for the revenue to come in. So, given that state aid given to the city does not need to be accepted as an official vote by the council, that was the reason I put my item on the agenda this evening. I want to refer it to Finance Committee, where we can discuss this as a committee to better understand. And I would suggest to the Chair of Finance that it doesn't have to be early September, but perhaps late September, early October, when more is known. But I want to be at the table for this state aid money. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. So, Counselor Rosetti, item number nine will be laid on the table and referred to Finance, and Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Directly in response to that, as the Chair, I absolutely intend to be discussing this committee, and I appreciate the items that are brought forward. I think Counsel Rosetti's is a good one for using for this discussion in the committee. To Director Bean, just, just, that was a lot, but fundamentally, what we, what we see here is, is basically a $6 million windfall that was unanticipated, which could offset the $5.2 million in free cash that was allocated to backstop the budget, but more likely is going to be needed to handle some of the many concerns that were brought up by this council during our budget discussions about the future, uncertain future expenses. Is that a fair summary?
That may be, and I think we'll have that opportunity up until the recap time. And I'm just basically saying, I'm concerned about the cost necessary in terms of the school reopening. So, to me, that would be, I think, to the mayor, and probably in my view, that, you know, it's a priority to be thinking about.
Okay. So, my, I very much appreciate you being here tonight. My intention would be to have this item in committee, and that we may check in on it occasionally between now and October as we get towards recap. And it would be in my expectation that supplemental appropriations will be requested by the mayor that would consume, let's say, all the resources that we have made available as a city to address various needs. So, I would anticipate we'd see a steady flow of those up, up through October, and maybe a little rush at the end of October as we approach recap, because that's when our final appropriation set the levy.
That's right. That's right.
All right. Thank you, Ms. President.
Any further discussion on these items? Here and no discussion, we'll lay these items on the table and refer them all to the Finance
Mr. President, returning to the regular order of business, we move to item number six, which is an order submitted by Counselor Ewan Campin, that the Director of Communications send a citywide mailer informing residents of the Tenant Notification Act and the ongoing eviction moratorium in light of ongoing unlawful notices to quit being distributed to tenants.
Counselor Ewan Campin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last year, the City Council passed the Tenant Notification Act, which requires landlords, at the time that they're seeking to displace their tenants, to provide tenants with written documentation from our Office of Housing Stability to the tenants that list their rights, and also several local organizations that can help them enact those rights. The issue is that many landlords and many tenants are unaware. They, they don't spend their time sitting around watching City Council meetings, apparently, despite everything that I do, to try to force them to. So, this act only works if people know about it, if landlords know that they have to give this notification, and if tenants know. this notification and if tenants know that they should expect it. So I think I am not alone here. I can tell you from repeated firsthand experience over the last month alone, that tenants, despite our eviction moratorium, despite this act, are still being kicked out of their houses, are still being served with just completely egregious increases in rent, which are clearly designed to threaten people into leaving or even with formal notices to quit. Blatantly illegal, and it's still happening, all of us know it, and I am still getting reached out to by tenants who are asking, what are my rights in this situation? Are there any local organizations that can help me? So I think I, I don't need to emphasize, I don't need to be extravagant. We all know what is about to happen if this eviction moratorium lets up in October. And I think we've been discussing how to get the word out. I think our communications department has done a great job getting the word out about our local eviction moratorium and everything we're doing, but there is nothing like putting a piece of paper in people's hands. And I think for everyone out there who is not spending their, their Wednesday night watching a live stream city council meeting, who doesn't necessarily read to the fourth or fifth paragraph of the, the update emails that the city sends, we need to get this information into people's hands because there is going to be a massive humanitarian crisis when this eviction moratorium lets up. So I think that we are well past the time where we need to just blast out this information as well as the eviction moratorium information to everyone in the city. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Strezko, Scott, Ba and Davis would like to sign on. Any further discussion? Here are none. This item will be laid on the table for approval. Counselor Strezko would like to comment.
Thank you. Yes, thank you very much for, I did not come onto his comments. Thank you very much, Mr. President. I cannot stress this enough. Been talking about this for months. We need this absolutely expedited as soon as, as soon as possible. There's dire need in the community. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much, Mr. President, for letting me speak.
Thank you. This item laid on the table for approval. Next item.
Item number seven is an order submitted by Counselor Ewan Campen that the Chief of Police provide a breakdown of how 911 emergency calls are triaged, coded and dispatched under our current system.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Thank you, Mr. President. So part of the work that Somerville has committed itself to doing is to reimagine what our first response could look like for non-emergency 911 calls, for, or for emergencies that are not violent or criminal in nature necessarily. And I have begun having community meetings with people, as I'm sure many of my colleagues have, talking to organizations about how we can address this. And I think one of the first issues that has arisen is the public wants to have a better understanding of exactly how our current 911 system works. What happens when a call goes in? How are they coded? What if it's a medical call, a mental health emergency, home breaking and entering? To understand what happens right now so that we can start to understand what we might like this to look like in the future. So I've spoken about this with Director Connors. I've had a conversation with members of the police department about this. Actually, earlier today, I just received an email from Director Connors that I have not had time to look at in detail, that I believe is, these documents basically, from the police department, the policies. So I wanted to put this in as an official board order so that this can go to committee and I'd ask that Director Connors also forward those, the items that were emailed to me so that this process can happen in the public and we can have this conversation kind of with full transparency. So I'd ask that this please go to public safety.
Counsel Ballantyne would like to sign on. Any further discussion? Here are none. This item will be laid on the table and referred to public health and safety. Next item.
Item number eight is an order submitted by Counselors McLaughlin, Klingon, Davis, Ewan Campen, Nedergang, Scott, White and Rosetti that the city solicitor appear before this council's Committee on Legislative Matters with draft language to repeal ordinance 9-120, the so-called anti-gang loitering ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I want to speak on this one. I might take a second, but you know, I also have a full order that people can read that kind of goes into the details of the anti-gang ordinance. But for those of you who weren't around in the 2000s, when there was a serious gang problem in the city, particularly with the MS-13 gang, which is the international gang, real violence happening, real problems in the community, the city council and the mayor at that time saw fit to pass an anti-gang ordinance, which in hindsight, really, I don't know, I just, it's something I've always wanted to get rid of and I never signed up for it because, or I've never brought it up because it's an ordinance that has technically never been used. The police have never used the anti-gang ordinance officially to combat gang problems. So I was never used, so I'm kind of like, why do, why do we bring it up? So why am I bringing it up right now? One, I've always wanted to repeal it and I think it's time to repeal it. But two, you know, I just want to highlight how things like this can happen even in Somerville. You know, people think, you know, this is a progressive city, we have progressive values. 2004, Somerville was still a progressive city, maybe more progressive now, but you could still call it a progressive city then. And this ordinance passed, State Rep Denise Provo was the only person to vote against this, and she said it was a political stunt and a hoax and is, has no intentions on actually addressing the problem at hand. I feel like it was a response to a real problem, but it does show that even progressive cities will move to take people's freedoms away when the public demands it. And we see now with a lot of calls to address police issues in the country, all these issues are coming to light and people don't seem to realize that, you know, this was actually a response from your government to the issues that you had. So whether it's the anti-gang ordinance, whether it's the war on drugs, whether it's the, you know, war on terrorism, these were all things that the public demanded and said, protect us, keep us safe at all costs, regardless of if it's stripping people their liberties. And now we're living in a different country where people are starting to realize this. And I think it's time to move this, but I also bring it up not only to point out that we have to resist the passions of the public sometimes for demanding stripping other people their liberties, we also have to resist some of the passions on the other side that demand us to take other actions that may not lead to fruitful development in community policing or national policing in general. So I'm going to refer this to legislative matters and I just really think it's, it's an idea whose time has come and I think it's about time to take it, to take this off our code of ordinances. I see, let's see, Counsel Ballantyne would like to sign on to seven. Counsel Strezko would like to sign on to item eight. Counsel Ba would like to sign on. Counsel Ballantyne would like to sign on. Klingon and Counsel White would like to comment.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, through you. I know we both have history.
I'm sorry, Counsel Klingon, I actually called on Counsel White.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. See, having participated in this throughout its promulgation, I have a little different perspective on this. The final product did not take anyone's rights away, and I will give an explanation actually of why. What triggered this were a few items, one of which was a gang rape of two young women at Foss Park. One of them was in a wheelchair, the other one was deaf, I believe. MS-13 was making inroads in many communities, specifically in Chelsea, I can remember. They were recruiting at Somerville High School. So the concern that was raised, and it had been happening in other communities, was the concern that you could have gangs essentially take over neighborhoods, intimidate folks, use it for drug activities, et cetera. So what happened was Van Alderman, Bill Roach, I believe introduced, it was essentially the City of Chicago gang ordinance. When it was first discussed in committee, it was of course clear that it had been ruled unconstitutional by the United States Supreme Court. So the discussion with the city solicitor was, would it be possible basically to enact some sort of a gang, anti-gang loitering ordinance that met constitutional requirements, but also, you know, did not impinge on people's rights in the city of Somerville? So essentially what happened was the decision of the Supreme Court was reviewed, it had struck down the Chicago ordinance five to four, and I'm operating from memory, so I may not be totally correct, but I'm doing the best I can. So what had happened is Justice Sandra Day O'Connor had joined the majority in striking the Chicago ordinance down, but she gave guidance on the type of gang ordinance that she would thought would, you know, pass constitutional muster. So we spent a lot of time on it and there were two essential items that were included in it. One was that it could only apply to specific areas of the city. So you could not have police officers riding around because they see a couple of young kids who might look Hispanic or whatever, claim that they were gang members and tell them to disperse and then arrest them if they didn't. This Chief of Police had to determine areas where crimes and evidence warranted the imposition of this type of a district where the anti-gang loid ordinance could be utilized. The second thing was people who were involved in this, I believe, had to have been convicted of a crime, or at least one or two of them. So again, you had to have a number of folks involved in criminal activities who were members of a gang in an area that had been determined to warrant it. It went as a home rule petition to the state legislature. I believe it was reviewed twice, the state legislature made changes and it was sent back to the city. It is an incredibly difficult ordinance to utilize because it's designed for almost a catastrophic type of situation. So it's not something you would have in your arsenal to deal with like regular types of gang issues. This would be when there was a very severe, severe impact on a neighborhood that was clearly articulable by standards from the police department and then standards would be implemented on how to utilize it. And that's why the gang task force was put in the ordinance. But essentially what happened was by the time it got back to us, there were no places in the city to warrant the police chief to designate them as districts where the anti-gang ordinance should be enforced. So it never got to that point. So there was no gang, you know, the gang task, task force that was set up, the citizens review, because the Chief of Police did not get to the point of even designating anything. So I think it is fair to say that people's constitutional rights were respected and were taken into account when this was drafted. Again, this was done, what, 16 years ago? And it was so strict to protect them, it, you know, it really couldn't be utilized. With that said, I'm in agreement that this is 16 years later and the current situation certainly doesn't warrant it. And if it ever got to that point, then it would be sort of certainly looked at different eyes. But again, this was 16 years ago with the results of what happened at Foss Park. And again, there was nationwide concern about MS-13, it was moving into the, you know, especially into Massachusetts. So I wanted to give that presentation to folks. So it's just, you know, it is put in the perspective that a number of folks had back then when it was enacted. And for me, I mean, I'm happy that it was never enacted because it never got, the gang situation never got to the point in the city where that would be warranted. So, you know, I did want to give my perspective on it so that people had sort of the history and the process that it went through. Again, even having been examined by Senate Council, because the House and Senate would not approve of anything that they, as a home rule petition, that they thought, you know, would impinge upon the Constitution. So I appreciate the indulgence of the Chair, the President, and I did want to give that perspective. Thank you.
All right. On the item, Counsel Klingon.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. I appreciate the historical context of this. I do understand the challenges that we faced back then, as I did live in the city and I, and I do remember all of those incidences. I also remember that at the time, myself and you, Mr. President, were sort of skeptical about this ordinance. It seemed more or less knee jerk and sort of a, a non, non-answer to a, to a problem that we were having, but certainly, you know, people were scared, people, there was a lot of unrest in the community and I think that, you know, people were looking for an answer and, you know, some felt this was it. And again, I, you know, as Counsel White said, I don't think it maybe ever came to its full, full use, which is a good thing for us, but I do think that, you know, I do have some concerns with this ordinance and I, and I have always had some concerns and I do think it's high time now to repeal it. And so I do support, you know, I thank you for bringing this to my attention and I'm very proud to sign on. And I, and so it's, yes, it's high time to repeal this legislation that I think wasn't really in the, in the vein of harm reduction and meeting people where they're at, it was more a reactive piece of legislation. Thank you for, again.
Any further discussion? Here are none. I'll just weigh in, just a couple of quick responses. And you know, when I'm, when I'm talking about the flaws of this ordinance, it's not really meant to point a finger at any elected officials who passed this. If anything, I'm actually pointing a finger at the public and asking the public to think about our responsibility to each other and to liberty in the, in general, because I see this as an example of just like the war on drugs, just like drugs is a real problem. We have overreacted to it in ways that haven't been productive, just like the war on terrorism hasn't been productive, is important, we need to protect ourselves from terrorism. It's overreacted and stripped people of their liberties. And I know that this, you know, that this basically got watered down to the point of basically not being used at all. But the lead sponsor at the time did cite the Chicago ordinance, which was deemed unconstitutional by the Supreme Court at that moment, it was already declared unconstitutional and they saw fit to move forward with it anyways. So that's what it is. And I, and I do think, you know, as State Rep Provo pointed out, she said back then on the record that she thought it was a political stunt and it wasn't going to do anything. And that's what I see is it didn't do anything. It didn't address gang problems, it didn't do any of the, it didn't address any of the real problems that did exist. And what I feel happens lots of times is we have a serious problem, the public demands us to do something and we, as a city council specifically, have very little power to address a lot of it. On a national and state level, people also expect their elected officials to do something about it and sometimes we do something about it and then it might not be the right idea. So it pleased people at the time, but it really, and then not to mention too, there were elections at this time. This ordinance dramatically impacted an election that year, that this anti-gang ordinance was used, one to promote elected officials and then also to shame anybody who didn't support it. The Counsel White mentioned that, you know, it was only for specific areas targeted, but that specific area was East Somerville, which has the highest diversity rate in the city and did have a gang problem. It has to be acknowledged that that was a real issue at the time. And I also just find, you know, I never have been negatively impacted by the anti-gang ordinance, but I do know people growing up during that time who identified as gang members just because they were hanging out at the park and maybe they weren't angels, but they were definitely not gang members. And the attitude at that time was crack down on these kids. Get them to move out, send the police, send the anti-gang unit, rough them up, do whatever it takes. And that was the attitude at the time. And the attitude has now changed, so I just want to change with the times as well. And then just one final comment, this anti-gang task force that is mentioned in the ordinance, as far as I know, has never existed or has never been truly used and it's definitely doesn't exist now. So I won't belabor it any further unless anyone has any further, Counsel White.
I do have the right of privilege, you did mention me, Mr. President.
Of course.
Okay. Couple of things. One is no area was ever designated as an area for this to be applied to. East Somerville was not, okay? It never was. And again, because of the difficulties, this was not supposed to be a panacea to cure the gang problems. It was designed basically for certain specific situations and those situations never arose. It wasn't used, this ordinance was never used to hassle people because it was never implemented with a designation, okay? So that's important, you know, to get across. Also, under this ordinance, the fact that someone or a group of people were thought to be gang members would not be sufficient. What was necessary was for them to have been involved in a crime. If you look at the, at the ordinance, so again, it was, it was very limited. The home rule petition was approved. Um, the home rule petition was approved in two thousand four. Um, it did not impact any election. Later on, in a special election, it was, um, the whole gang issue was utilized by by a candidate. But not this. So again, I am concerned with the fact that people think something was done, um, you know, that would severely impact people's constitutional rights. But it did go through a review at the city level. It went through a review at the state level before the home rule petition was approved. And you didn't have, and I want to make it clear, you did not have the task force created because it was never implemented by the chief of police designating an area where it would be applied to. With that said, I am in full agreement of the appropriateness of repealing it today. I did want to make sure that it was, the facts were given out and then people can draw their conclusions from the facts. But it was not moved forward because it was in the face of it being unconstitutional. It was recognized at the very first meeting in legislative matters. And the process was to take what had been submitted, make it to stand up to constitutional scrutiny, but also protect people's rights so they couldn't be hassled because somebody thought they were a gang member or whatever. Under this ordinance, there were very specific requirements that had to be met. And I do want to get that across, and again, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Needigan, you have a comment?
Um, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I held off because, you know, this this was an old, an old battle, but I can't, I can't hold myself back from commenting. This was completely and widely universally understood to be an anti-Latino ordinance when it was passed. It was designed to give powers to the police to harass young Latino men who were hanging out on the street. It was exactly the kind of thing that people so object to now. And as you said, Mr. President, at the time, it was wildly popular. At that time in Somerville, there was a great deal of racial and ethnic tension because immigrants of color had been moving into the city and a lot of the old white folks who grew up here were not happy about it. And this was an initiative by that constituency of the city to clamp down on something that there were gangs, there was some danger. But it was intended to give the police the power to uh uh to use frankly unconstitutional uh means of clamping down on, you know, on what to a lot of white people in the city at the time was seen as, you know, Latino gang violence. So that is the, I think, Mr. President, you have characterized it accurately. I think it was a shameful moment in the city's history. And I'm delighted that we are going to be discussing repealing it. I will support that with everything that I've got. Thank you.
Any further comments?
Yeah, Mr. President. It was not, thank you, it was not designed to harass Hispanic youth. It was designed to deal with MS-13 gang and it was not designed to give police discretion to hassle people because of the requirements that were put into it. Okay, the requirement that first there had to be articulable reasons for the chief of police to designate an area where the gang, where where the anti-lord ordinance could be implemented. That was never done, so there was never an ability. Now, did some people, maybe there were some people who had a, uh, you know, an anti-immigrant or a racist bias to this. But the ordinance itself, okay, was drafted with with the thoughts in mind, again, to protect people's rights. Um, the, if there had been abuses of it, then first, if it had been implemented, then you would have had the task force created. And if there were abuses, those folks would have clearly addressed it and the city council would have addressed it. So, I mean, I I am sorry and I'm taken aback when people give motivations, when councils give motivations for something that they weren't present in during the meetings and when scrutiny was given over to, you know, the to the constitutional provisions. Um, but anyway, again, I don't want to belabor it, and and again, I agree that it is time to repeal it. But I I just want to create a a little different impression for folks. I don't know who's watching this, but, you know, to make sure that that, you know, it was not a bunch of racists that were going around, um, you know, crafting this thing. A lot of time was spent and and the state legislature did approve it, it was the first of its kind. And for to make it through that, it had to go through Senate counsel who also scrutinized it. So again, I appreciate it, Mr. President. Thank you.
Any further comments? Here and none, this item will be laid on the table and referred to the Legislative Matters Committee. Next item.
Mr. President, item number ten is communications submitted by Counselor Rosetti reporting on an additional state appropriation of $250,000 for high school construction project COVID-19 costs.
Counselor Rosetti.
Thank you, sir. Um, again, because state aid does not have to be accepted officially by the council, I I wanted to let it be known to you, my colleagues, that, um, thank you very much with the gratitude to Senator Jalen and her, the representative team that represents Somerville. Um, together, um, they successfully amended the motion before the governor, the bill before the governor. And, um, we got the $250,000 request that Senator Jalen put in on our behalf. Um, very, I I attached a piece of the language of that bill to this item so that if you wish to review it, you may. Um, the good news is that this this money, this legislation is from the fiscal year 2020 funds. It's not tied to the state budget debate for fiscal year 21. And what also is very good about it is the money will go directly to the city of Somerville. So this is money that was desperately needed for the contingency line of the Somerville High School project. And I am very grateful to Senator Jalen and the representatives of our community to make this possible.
Any further discussion? Here and none, this item will be laid on the table and placed on file.
Item number eleven is a resolution submitted by Counselor Scott Ballantyne Klingon Davis Strezzo supporting House Resolution 702, the People's Justice Guarantee.
Are we keeping this one on the table, Counselor Scott?
Yes, please, sir.
That will be laid on the table, no vote taken.
Item twelve is a resolution by Counselor Ballantyne. The mayor, chief of police, and director of health and human service discussed with his counsel at a June meeting their declaration of systemic racism as a public safety and health emergency.
Are we keeping this on the table, Counselor Ballantyne?
Um, yes, Mr. President, unless somebody has gotten a response back that I don't know about.
Do we have any comment?
Share it.
Any comment on this item before we lay it on the table? Here are no comment from the administration, this item will be laid on the table with no vote taken.
Item thirteen is grant a location application which was submitted by TC Systems seeking to install 78 feet of conduit in Washington Street from a pole at the corner of Magnus Ave to a proposed handhold across the street in the sidewalk at Perry Park and then on to an adjacent pole where it's tied off.
On the item, Counselor Scott.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. The applicant's engineering team has been in contact with myself and city engineering department. The revised plan is attached here and should be satisfactory, so I'd like to go ahead and move for approval on this tonight.
All right, any further discussion?
With the, with the license and permits, uh, permission, of course.
Counselor White?
Oh, certainly, I was, uh, this was left in the in the hands of the good counselor from Ward Two, so I'm fine with it.
All right, here are no further discussion, this item will be laid on the table for approval.
Very good. Uh, item number fourteen is a communicate, uh, communication from the mayor, a question to the mayor, question the change of five voting locations. Um, Ward Three Precinct One moving to the Central Library Community Room. Ward Three Precinct Three moving to the St. Catherine's Church. Ward Six Precinct One moving to the Dilboy VFW Post. Ward Six Precinct Three moving to the West Neighborhood School. And Ward Seven Precinct Three moving to the West Somerville Neighborhood School as well.
All right, we have Nick Salerno in attendance, if anyone has questions, but Counselor Davis has a comment. Counselor Davis, you there? No, unfortunately, Counselor Davis, oh, here you are. Look at there you are. I'm going to send you an unmute request and, yep, you there?
I am here, Mr. President.
There you are, finally.
Look at that, all it took was a few buttons on some magical machine. Um, thank you for the recognition. Um, on this point, I I've had a number of conversations with our constituents. I have significant concerns about moving Ward Six Precinct Three to uh to the West Somerville School, Neighborhood School. That's a good half mile away from the, you know, from the bulk of folks in that in that, um, in that precinct. But I did have a conversation with um with Director Salerno. And, you know, unfortunately, um, what it comes down to, and this is something I've communicated to a number of my constituents over the course of the day, is, um, A, we can't open the windows at Iglesias Baptiste, um, which would have gone a long way to help making things safe from a COVID standpoint. To be clear, this this uh this move is temporary, in a sense, as soon as the, you know, the COVID issues are no longer a concern, we'll have more options at least, and we'll decide what to do. Um, but the the thing, the thing I really wanted to point out, this this ties into a theme of the evening and and I'll I'll piggyback on the comments I would have made earlier had we been able to get me unmuted. Um, which, by the way, I I could hear you all earlier, so I'm not sure why, uh, why the microphone wasn't working then, but glad you can hear me now. Um, you know, from what I understand i- in the discussions of looking for a place to move Precinct Three, it it, the easy, logical, um, most obvious place that everyone noted was the TAB building, which is just over the, over the lineup at Ward Seven along Holland, um, very close to the bulk of Precinct Three. And my understanding is that the folks at Tufts pretty much said, I know, we don't know, we can't figure it out, we can't tell you, we can't promise, maybe it'll be available, maybe it won't, but, um, sound, to use my words, it sounds like they just blew us off. Um, and to be clear, that's that's my characterization, certainly not Director Salerno, who is, as you all know, is always respectful, um, to to the utmost degree. Um, and I know that he did absolutely all the diligence that he possibly could do, that anybody could do. Um, and so it's just, I I wanted to note this because it just adds to my frustration. Um, we heard the words arrogance this evening with regards to the presentation that Tuscan gave last night. And I don't find that to be inconsistent at all. Um, and to me, to have, uh, to to have our request go out to the university to, um, uh, you know, to to use some space in the TAB building, as we know, there are several there, for a relatively, a a typically a relatively small turnout. Uh, Ward Six Precinct Three generally doesn't have a significant turnout, and particularly with mail-in voting this year. I hope folks will take advantage of that, um, both mail-in voting and early voting. So, um, uh, you know, for Tufts to just not even be able to let us know one way or the other or, you know, figure out a way to help out and make it work, just, it it just burns me. Um, and I wanted to make sure that I I made that comment here, so folks understand what the administration and what particularly Director Salerno and the folks in the elections office, where it did go through to try and find a a reasonable spot. I think we all agree that that having to travel, you know, uh, I mean, half mile isn't a long distance, but if you don't have a car, if you, um, you know, have challenges getting around, it's not an insignificant distance and to have to travel that far out of your ward to vote is certainly not consistent with what we strive to achieve when it comes to voting accessibility. So, um, I will continue to work with the administration to to get Tufts to help us out. Um, and because the TAB building is the the one space that probably makes sense while we have COVID concerns, while we can't use Iglesias Baptiste. I do hope that as soon as the West Branch Library opens, it may be that we can use uh, an accessible space that will will come online in that building. And certainly looking forward, this just underscores the importance of a large community space at 45 College Ave, uh, which I've talked about in the past and which, um, you know, obviously with the with our financial situation is a bit in question timeframe-wise, but eventually we'll have a space there. So, um, I I I came into this day anticipating potentially objecting to this. Um, I won't, I know that Director Salerno's done everything he can and we just don't have a good answer. We can't open the windows at one place and Tufts wouldn't make the other place available for us. So if you want to blame anyone, get in line with all the folks we heard earlier today. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, Ms. Weber would like to address Counselor Davis's points directly. Does anyone have any objection to her speaking first? Here and none, uh, Ms. Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, um, I I want to thank Counselor Davis for his point. And I do just want to clarify that, um, on behalf of Director Salerno, I had reached out to Tufts University about the usage of the TAB conference, the atrium conference space for the purpose of the primary as well as the general election. Um, it wasn't that, I just want to clarify that it wasn't that Tufts blew us off or that they were not responsive, they were actively, um, actively reaching out to the, uh, to the groups and the departments within Tufts University that would have used the space that day and were actively trying to work with us to figure out a way to to make it work so that we could use that space the entire day on September first. Uh, the bigger issue was that, in fact, they weren't sure um, if we would be able to have access to that space on November third. Um, because at that point, classes will, um, would have resumed and because of Tufts' attempt to de-densify their classroom spaces, um, that they are planning on using the TAB space in order to be able to space students out more effectively. Um, as a result of that and the conversation that I had with Director Stelges, she had communicated with Director Salerno and, um, noted back to me that at that point, because of the concern over November third and consistency, it made sense to just identify another space. Um, so at that point, it was, at that point, I reached out to Tufts and told them, you know, essentially, never mind, I think we're going to go in a different direction. I just wanted to clarify that, um, so that everyone's, you know, everyone's aware of the context in in how this polling location identification happened. Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Davis, your response?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, I mean, I just, you know, it's a, again, to echo the comments you made earlier tonight, it's just, when it comes down to pushing back on things, it seems this administration just has challenges with that. You know, to to me, what what Leah Littlebry described is exactly what I described, which is, you know, a shrug of the shoulders and, yeah, we'll try, we'll look, we'll see if we can figure it out, but we don't know. And and for for something as fundamentally as critical as voting in a community that hosts this university, in a building that we used to own as a city, um, they couldn't figure out a way with an urgency of a global pandemic to say, you know what, yeah, we'll we'll make it work. We'll figure out a way to make it work and we recognize the importance of this and and you can you can schedule this here and we'll work around it. Um, they couldn't do that. So I I think that's entirely consistent with how I characterized it earlier. And I'm just immensely disappointed that that's where we ended up being, and we ended up telling them, never mind, you couldn't tell us yes, so we're going to have to go with this really imperfect solution in in, you know, substitute to what would be the obvious solution. If Tufts had been able to, if Tufts had done the right thing from the from the get-go and said, yep, we'll make it work, voting is critical and this is an election of our lifetime and we want to make sure that people have easy access, so we will work with you as a as a partner in the community. They didn't do that, so nothing I said changes, I still maintain my position.
I'll just add, Counselor Davis, that it's interesting that Tufts is opening their own buildings, but will not open them, buildings that we previously owned, to city services. I have Counselor Strezzo and then I have Counselor Ba and Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Did you have questions for, did you say that Nick Salerno is on the line?
Yes, Mr. Salerno, you there?
I am here.
Hi, Mr. Salerno. Hi, I did have a question about same thing, uh, the Ward Six Precinct Three location. Because, right, with mobility issues and we have some, well, with mobility issues that are that are right there, that's an easier location from far, West Somerville School is very, very, it's a long schlap. Are there any solutions? I mean, hack Flatbrett, the Somerville Theater? I'm pretty sure no one's handled the polling right now. Are there any other solutions?
Through you, Mr. President. We're looking. We haven't stopped looking. We're gonna continue to look. It's just that we're under time constraints, and the time constraints were the fact that I had to have a report ready, which we posted on the website, that had to be posted on the website at least three days prior to the taking of the vote, which I hope the good council will do this evening, because we have to vote on these changes by state law. The latest would be the 7th, I believe, in a couple of days. But we, as I spoke with Counselor Davis earlier this evening, we will endeavor to continue to search for more mobile space, a more adequate space, a more versatile space.
Are there any, with respect to COVID and social distancing, is any form of shuttling or shuttle buses possible specifically for this ward and precinct?
We've never done that before, but I'd be glad to look into it. I really think, though, based on the fact that we're in, because of the pandemic, we are just, we are just so busy doing everything we possibly can to accommodate mail-in voting, getting the ballots out. I'm hoping that we get a tremendous turnout with mail-in voting, which we're seeing. We are getting good turnout. We can't, we're starting to, we can't have an exact number for you right now, because the numbers are just increasing every day. However, I don't see, unless some organization can come forward and offer those who would like a ride to the polls. It's not like in a municipal election where local candidates do that. We've never seen it happen in a, let's say, a state or a federal election council.
Okay. Well, we're in unprecedented times, and with, is the Council on Aging capable of doing that? I also see on our agenda that they are, they are accepting a, or we are to vote on them accepting a increase of shuttle capacity. I know it's a different, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it is different, because I think that their activities are planned. I mean, I don't know how we would go about this. How would we start picking up, you know, make plans for individual voters to be picked up at their homes, at where, I don't know, and then be shuttled individually? It might be, it might be a real Herculean effort.
I hear you. I'm really concerned about it being a voter, it actually being, some people are set in their ways and just will be voting in person, I imagine, but I do worry that it may be hampering to some people to vote day out.
All right. Nick, on this point, very quickly, you know, you're asking us to approve these sites, and if we don't approve it, or if we do, within a few days is the deadline for this. So I just want to be clear to the council that if we approve this, this is the plan. I don't see, I don't see the Elections Department scrambling to find another location within a few days, and then us holding a special council meeting to approve the new locations. So I just want to, I just want to clarify that, that we're voting on what's before us right now.
I'm sorry. So it will be as it is right now?
Yeah. But what I'm saying is, what they're proposing is what they're asking for. If we vote for this, I don't see it scrambling to find another spot, because then we're gonna have to have another special meeting just to have those spots. So I think this is a decision we have to make, for better or for worse.
Got it. Okay.
Thank you.
I have Counselor Ba and then Counselor Scott. Counselor Ba, you there? While we wait for Counselor Ba, Counselor Scott.
Mr. President, I believe Counselor Ba was muted, but, there you go.
Is John muted too?
No, I'm not muted now, but thank you, Chairman. You know, yeah, Mr. President, I was muted, so I could not unmute myself. But thank you. I just wanted to underscore, you know, like, the fact that we need to always, I appreciate this request, you know, from the mayor, but later today, I was also on emailing with other constituents, with Counselor David, it should not be up to the ward counselor to provide a rationale, you know, to the constituent. So sometimes we should, you know, like, this kind of, like, this communication should come with some really detailed rationale and options for, you know, those constituents that are seeing this as a surprise and don't know what to do, so that we shouldn't, you know, it shouldn't rely on us to provide them with alternative to turn, and now you have to vote by mail, or, you know, yes, it's due to COVID, perhaps, you know, like the good counselor was explaining, like, what it meant for being due to COVID, like, because people just want to understand. Everybody's all stressed, and now maybe mobility impaired, different, you know, strategy, they have no, it can end up impacting, you know, even the voting itself, which we don't want. So I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, this is exactly what's before us. It is the best of a bad set of options, and I just want to support Counselor Davis in his effort to make it perfectly clear that this is a choice that was made by a private institution when asked for their assistance in providing a facility for safe and local voting location that would have required, you know, perhaps suspending their use of that space for a day, two days, three days. To be perfectly honest with you, I'll be shocked if Tufts is in session on Election Day, and their unwillingness to put the public, the civic capacity to function in a pandemic above their need to have their classes in session and maintain their profits is just, it's disgusting. So I appreciate Counselor Davis keeping the focus on that. I apologize to the constituents who are going to be inconvenienced or even prevented from voting as a result of this, but we do need to approve it this evening, if only to, in my opinion, we need to approve it this evening, if only to provide people with a place where they'll be able to exercise their right to vote. And just can only express my strongest, strongest disappointment with Tufts in this matter. Thank you.
Counselor Kling.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, you know, I understand that the challenge that we have before us. I understand that many people will vote by mail, but we, I have heard from some constituents who are concerned about where they can go for a physical location. Unfortunately, you know, some of these locations may not be ideal, but we do need, we do need a place to go and vote physically, and I do think it's important to move on this now, so I would move to approve. Thank you, sir.
Counselor Kling moves to approve. Any discussion? Here and none. Since it's, this is the most time-sensitive item, I think we should do a roll call vote now, and we'll take up the other items after. So here and no discussion. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Very good. Mr. President, this is a roll call vote on the approval of the change of five voting locations. On that item, Counselor Kling.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezow.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all 11 counselors have voted in favor of this item. This item has been approved.
All right, next item.
Next item is item number 15, which is a request to the mayor requesting approval to appropriate $170,000 from the Union Square Community Benefits Stabilization Fund to fund a Main Street Small Business Liaison and Job Placement and Career Navigation Services for residents.
Any discussion on the item?
Mr. President?
Is Counselor Scott?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
So I'd ask if there was anybody available from the administration to speak to this. This is some funds that are intended to go towards job training and, you know, community, these are part of community benefits funds that, quite frankly, Union Square Neighborhood Council's been waiting on for quite some time, and was one of the primary reasons for having a special meeting. With that said, I have heard some concerns about the metering of this money and how often it's gonna need to come out. So is there anybody here from the administration prepared to speak on the item this evening?
Ms. Weber, are you there, or anyone else there to speak on this?
Mr. President, this is Director Connor. The good counselor from Ward 2 is correct. This is put on to, as a time-sensitive matter, wanting to move this particular item forward. Questions about the larger sort of dispensation from this particular stabilization fund, we're happy to address at an upcoming meeting. We don't have anyone who we asked to sit in the meeting tonight to address this item.
Through the chair. I'm sorry, Ms. Connor. Alan Ignacio here from OSPCD.
Please go ahead and answer.
Yeah, so briefly through the chair, this is set up as a stabilization fund. So we have set up the fund, so we are allowed to receive further deposits or contributions from the developer. However, every time we need to appropriate out for expenditures, it does require a council vote. So I believe we do, we are expecting future contributions from the developer, which will not require council action, but each expense out requires a council vote. That was the question I was understanding. So, Mr. Chair, maybe, Mr. President, I would say the way to handle this, or way I'd like to handle it, is certainly to move for approval this evening, but to have an item related to the appropriations from the Union Square Community Benefits Stabilization Fund referred to the Finance Committee so that we can have a more in-depth discussion with community development.
So which item did you want referred to committee?
Well, I would like to move for approval for number 15 this evening. I'd like to create a new item that is referred to committee. So perhaps it would be best to lay item 15 on the table for approval, unless it requires, actually, probably requires a roll call vote. So I'd like to approve this and then create an item that goes to committee.
Yes, let's approve this, and then you can write your language down. I do have a question. So Counselor Scott moves to approve. Any discussion? Here and none. Mr. Ignacio, I did have a request from Union Square activists. They were curious about why they're getting the money in separate funds instead of one lumped sum. Could you answer that for me?
Through the chair, I'm sorry. Could you specify on that a little bit? What do you mean?
Well, I understand. If I'm thinking of the right item, this is the first of several payments to come, correct?
Oh, yeah, correct. That is true. We, so through the chair, we have to have the physical cash in the fund.
Okay. Well, they asked, why can't they just get all the funds at once instead of one at a time?
Well, so there's a couple steps. So currently, the balance in that fund is $214,000. $170,000 is what we have in known expenses that need to get appropriated out. Beyond the $170,000 for the Main Streets Liaison and the Job Placement Services, there are no specific expenses that are to be appropriated for right now. When those are incurred or put under contract, then we can come before you again for another expenditure vote.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ewan Campen, you have a comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not sure if I know exactly what the concern is that you're raising, but I think part of the issue is the community benefits agreement between the Union Square Neighborhood Council and US2, the developer, specifies that they jointly agree for multi-year contracts for these two positions, whereas the approval that's pending before us now is for one year. And my understanding of the issue is that we only have enough money in this fund at this point that we perceive as contributions from US2 to fund one year. I think that's kind of the explanation for where we are. If it's a question of advocacy, of pushing US2 to front-load more of their contribution into this fund, that I, certainly all in favor of that. I want as much of the money as we can possibly get from them upfront, but just, that is not where we are right now. We do not have the money for multiple years of this contract.
That makes sense to me. I just, did someone comment?
No, through the chair, I was gonna say, Counselor Ewan Campen's characterization was correct.
Okay, that makes sense to me. I had a constituent ask me, so I told her I'd ask. So Counselor Scott moves for approval. Any further discussion? Here and none. Please call the roll.
Mr. President, there's a roll call vote on the approval of the appropriation of $170,000 from the Union Square Community Benefits Stabilization Fund for a Main Street Small Business Liaison and Job Placement Services. On that item, Counselor Kling.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezow.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all 11 counselors have voted in favor of this appropriation. It has been approved. And let me just add, Mr. President, having been approved, this item can also be forwarded to the Finance Committee for discussion purposes, the same way orders are approved and then forwarded to a committee for discussion purposes.
Very good. Thank you for the advice, Mr. Clerk. We'll lay this item on the table while we've just voted on it. So we'll forward it to the, well, we're still gonna lay it on the table to refer to the Finance Committee.
Mr. President, as a point of procedure, I believe you're able to forward this for further discussion without a roll call vote?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Then I'll refrain from creating a new item and a number for it. Please just hear the text that was sent to the clerks.
All right, very good. Next item.
Item 16 is a request to the mayor requesting acceptance of a $100,000 grant with no new match required from the Mass Department of Health and, from the Mass Department of Health to the Health and Human Services Department to fund expanded substance abuse prevention programming.
Any discussion?
No. Mr. President, I'd request that we could waive the readings for items 16 through 20, all of which are no new match required, unless anyone objects, and except all of them, they are all grants of no match.
All right. Counselor Scott moves to waive the readings of these items. Any discussion? Here and none. The items are waived, the readings are waived, the items are laid on the table for approval. And now that we're down to communications, why don't we do a roll call vote for all items laid on the table?
Mr. President, the motion then will be on the approval of Counselor Davis's laid item and items 4 through 9, 13, 16 through 20, and 31, and to place items 3, 10, and 21 on file. On that motion, Counselor Kling.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezow.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all 11 counselors have voted in favor of that motion. It has been approved.
All right, next item.
Mr. President, that brings us up to item Mr. President, that brings us up to item number 22, which is an item of new business.
Mr. President.
Counselor White.
Thank you. I moved to waive the readings of items 22 through 25. I've been assured by the city clerk that it's all in order, so I would move to approve them this evening.
All right, Counselor White moves to waive the readings and move for approval. Any discussion? Here and none. Uh, let's do a roll call vote on this.
Roll call vote on the approval of these four, uh, new business items. Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
Counselor, uh, Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, with all 11 counselors in favor, those items have been approved.
Next item.
Next, we move to item number 26, which is a, uh, request from the La Court Foundation LLC, which is proposing a zoning amendment to rezone their property at 34 to 36 Merriam Street to a UR zoning district.
Any discussion on this item? Here and none. This item will be referred to the Land Use Committee, uh, with a copy sent to the planning board.
Very good. Item number 27 is a, uh, communication submitted by 13 citizens who have submitted comments regarding Tufts' plans to reopen its campus in the fall.
This item will be laid on the table and placed on file.
Item number 28 is an order submitted by Counselor Scott that the city solicitor draft language to prohibit the use of prison labor of any kind for city projects, including the Middlesex Sheriff's Community Work Program.
Counselor Scott.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, as I was reviewing, uh, previous year's Finance Committee meetings, um, I, I came across a mention, uh, from, uh, late Commissioner Cody, uh, referring to the use of the Middlesex Sheriff's Department, uh, Community Work Program as a way to bring incarcerated people, uh, on city property and to do work that otherwise be done by city employees. Um, and it was praised as a, as a great policy for the city. Um, in fact, the city doesn't pay those incarcerated laborers anything at all. Uh, now, this is not any illegal program. This is actually something that is authorized by Chapter 127, Section 49(c) of Mass General Law. Uh, it is, however, extremely problematic, let's say. Um, I don't need to get into a lot of discussion about it tonight. Um, but I, I did follow up with our current commissioner, uh, when I found this record of it being a practice that we have pursued in the city previously, uh, and found that he was in fact already reaching out to the Middlesex Sheriff's, uh, office to see if he could get some more of that prison labor back in the city to handle some of the tasks on school buildings. So, uh, I asked him to not proceed with that just yet, um, so that we could have a policy discussion about it. But quite frankly, I would like, uh, this council with the city's office to draft legislation that just, um, makes it clear that Somerville will not, uh, use, use the authorizations in Chapter 127, Section 49(c), which is with regard to employment of prisoners of county correctional institutions on municipal property. So, um, I, I think this is something that is very clearly, uh, not in alignment with the morals and values of the community, and, uh, I look forward to getting some feedback from the solicitor's office, uh, very shortly on this. I'd ask that it be referred to Legislative Matters, and I have full confidence that the chair of that committee will be able to pursue it with alacrity. Thank you, sir.
Counselor Ewan Campan and Strezzo would like to sign on, and Counselor Strezzo has a comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to commend my colleague, Counselor Scott. Nice catch. Sign me on. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Here and none. I'd like to sign on as well, and thank you, Counselor Scott, for bringing this up. Um, as the son of a municipal painter, amongst other things, um, I remember seeing, uh, people working to paint a city hall, in particular, our little clock tower, and wondering why we're doing this, and just thinking that, uh, you know, that's a job my father used to do, and now it's used for prison labor. So I definitely support this. Um, and we will lay this item on the table and refer it to the Legislative Matters Committee, and Counselor Klingon has a comment.
Uh, just really quick, yeah, I also want to pile on and thank, uh, Counselor Scott for bringing this up. Uh, a- as a friend of labor, who, uh, somebody who, uh, believes in, uh, uh, good paying union jobs and, uh, especially when it comes to, uh, municipal buildings and municipal, um, uh, practices, I think that, uh, you know, this is sort of taking away from, uh, from, from opportunities for people in our community. Um, uh, so I would, I would definitely, um, support not using prison labor, especially since they, the amount that they get paid is extremely low. Um, and I think that, uh, it's high time that we, we, uh, give this work back to people in the community and, uh, let our, uh, incarcerated individuals, uh, have some dignity and not be out there, uh, essentially painting for free. Thank you.
All right, any further comment? Here and none. This item will be laid on the table, referred to Legislative Matters.
Item 29 is an order submitted by Counselor Scott. The chief of police provide this council an itemized statement of all materials, tools, and property owned or leased by the city for the use of the police department.
Counselor Scott.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'd ask that the next item also be read, so we can take them up both at the same time.
Mr. Clerk, please read the next item.
Item 30 is an order submitted by Counselor Scott. The chief of police provided this council an itemized statement of any equipment purchased on behalf of employees of the police department, which become the individual employee's property.
Counselor Scott.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this order is, um, inspired in part by action and investigation undertaken by the Cambridge City Council, um, which, in response to public questioning about the nature of hardware, uh, particularly militarized hardware, uh, owned and ready for deployment by the Cambridge Police Department, um, heard that there was none. Uh, and then in response to a request for an itemized statement of equipment, found that there were a significant number of sniper rifles and Alanco bearcans, amongst other items. So, um, so as to not go through the theater of it all, uh, I'd just like to have this, um, this request made. It could be considered a public records request, but if I have to file that separately, I certainly can do so. Uh, the goal of the first is simply to have a list of all, uh, equipment owned by the Somerville Police Department, and then the goal of the second is to capture any items that have been purchased and then granted to the individual officers. Uh, we heard mention when discussing grants for bulletproof vests, for example, uh, that in many cases they are purchased and then, um, as they are refreshed, they are given to the officers. I'm curious to see, um, how that is declared surplus or how that's actually disposed of by the department, because, you know, this is durable equipment. Um, and I'd like to know what items might be, um, being acquired by the department and then granted to individual officers. So, uh, I would ask that these items be approved with a copy, uh, to finance, so that we can, what, it could, it could go to a committee at your discretion, sir, but I'd, I'd like them approved and, uh, a copy sent to some committee, so that we can have some discussion on it.
I think finance makes sense. Um, any further discussion? Here and none. These items will be laid on the table for approval and referred to the Committee of Finance.
Next item, Mr. President, is item number 32, which is an order submitted by Counselor Ballantyne. The director of finance discussed with this council's finance committee several suggestions for assistance proposed by a group of Somerville arts and cultural organizations.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. So the council received an email from 17 of our arts and cultural organizations asking for our help, and I want to help them where we can, um, because we all know that the arts and the cultural organizations bring revenue, bring new residents, bring new ideas and businesses, uh, into our community, um, which makes us, you know, the, 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 the place that people want to live and work. It's diverse and it's dynamic. So they've outlined some ideas in the email, which I'd like the Finance Committee to review with the Director of Finance and the Director of the Arts Council, and I request that the Chair of Finance put this on the next Finance Committee agenda for September. Um, I would like to move, Mr. President, to, um, amend my order, so it reads, uh, that the Director of Finance and the Director of the Arts Council. So add those, uh, three words in there, and the Director of the Arts Council, four words, please.
All right, Counselor Niedergang would like to sign on. Um, so on the amendment, any discussion? Here and none. Uh, I guess we need a roll call vote to approve the amendment. And, uh, Counselor Strezzo would like to sign on. Mr. Clerk, can you call the roll on the amendment?
This is a roll call vote on amending, uh, item number 32 to include the Director of the Arts Council. On that item, Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, with all, uh, counselors approving, that amendment is, is now adopted.
All right, any further discussion on the item? Here and none. This item will be laid on the table for approval and referred to the Finance Committee.
Very good. Item number 33 is a communication submitted by Counselor Ballantyne conveying her correspondence with Tufts University President Monaco regarding Tufts' fall reopening plans.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted this to be on the record that showed the, the letter that I sent to, um, President Monaco and his, uh, response, because this was taken up, uh, during recess. So I wanted to make sure my colleagues, uh, saw the communication back and forth. Thank you.
All right, this item will be laid on the table and placed on file. Uh, Mr. Clerk, do we have any further items?
Mr. President, there is just one more laid item, and that is the communication from Tufts University responding to the License Commission's, uh, letter about, uh, the outdoor dining guidelines. I will add that, uh, response as a laid item on the agenda.
Okay, uh, any discussion? Here and none. This item will be laid on the table and placed on file, and now let's do a roll call vote for all remaining items.
Mr. President, this is a roll call vote on the approval of items 28 to 30 and 32 as amended, and to place items 27 and 33 and that late communication from Tufts on file. On that motion, Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes, please.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, the city council has spoken with one voice to approve that motion.
Very good. Uh, seeing no further business before us, uh, Counselor Klingon moves to adjourn. Uh, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
This is a roll call vote on adjournment. Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor, Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, again, all 11 counselors have voted in favor of adjournment. Uh, the vote's unanimous.
All right, thank you, everyone, for indulging us, uh, in this last minute meeting. I hope you all can go back to having some form of recess. Uh, thank you very much. We are adjourned.